Right, so good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. This meeting is being conducted remotely, fully remotely due to the weather. We made that decision yesterday, although I think we can see that the storm today was probably a little over forecast. In accordance with the requirements, the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page. And will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda list all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Because we are remote, we are going to forego tonight the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will start tonight by first acknowledging again that we are meeting remotely as such, all votes tonight will be conducted via roll call. Also, Mr. Vice Chair Mr. Alonso is not with us today due to a planned time off. I like to start tonight before we get into public comments by starting with an announcement of sorts. So I'm going to go ahead and and read this. There has been some reference in conversations across town and in social forums that there is a way for the Board of Assessors and or the Select Board to vote that the assessments were wrong or that we lack confidence in them. And that we or they can send a communication to the Department of Revenue and trigger a townwide reassessment. That is not accurate. The Lord knows how we all wish that there was a way to rewind the clock and find a way for all of us in our community to avoid being in this situation. But time is in an ever forward motion as best we know, we cannot go back. And there is no available option to redo taxes across town. As confirmed by our legal counsel and the Department of Revenue, the controlling legislation that identifies recourse for assessment decisions is Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section fifty-nine. The section is titled abatements. Some have pointed to language about the town having the ability to correct a clerical error. D O R regulations specifically identify situations unrelated to property valuations in which arithmetic clerical or other obvious errors can be corrected. In the case of property evaluations, the language only notes clerical errors. The Bureau of Municipal Finance Law provides a definition of clerical error as one that pertains to a clerk, copyist, or writer, or to a writing. A clerical error is a mistake in copying, writing, recording, and processing information. They go, they go on to state that a clerical error does not involve the exercise of any judgment or discretion. Any assessment error regarding the grade use classification quality of construction or other element of a property which involves the exercise of an assessor's opinion in the evaluation process is not a clerical error. A family stopped me at Hannaford last night and we talked for a short while. I was stopped by a couple of families, but one in particular that I want to reference, they live on Hickory Hills. And they were approached with an offer to buy their house over the past few weeks. And they sold because their houses paid off, they are retired and they now can't afford the taxes. They've lived in town for over thirty-five years and I went to school with both of their children. I wish for their sake and for so many others that there was a townwide solution to immediately resolve the pain. But to be as clear as possible, the abatement process is the only process for anyone to see a change in their property valuation and tax assessments this fiscal year. It is not because we refuse to activate an alternative process, it is because there is no alternative process. At last week's meeting of the Board of Assessors, a few things were said that require clarification. The town manager has not talked to the board, to the members of the Board of Assessors, I have. The town manager's intent has been for the principal assessor to work solely with the Board of Assessors on the abatement applications for properties that are not an index one, as is his ordinary job. And for him to work alongside another or other assessors in the abatement process for index one. The Select Board authorized funding and an RFP was published to bring in independent assessors to assist with the abatement applications for index one. At last week's Select Board meeting, while providing the investigative update, I read a list of properties that sold in index one in two thousand twenty-one. I erroneously included a multifamily on twenty-one Parmenter Road on Lake Shirley that was assessed at three hundred seventy-two thousand and fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And that sold for one point four million. That sale was not considered qualified. After receiving a few responses from residents about that sale, I referenced my notes and recognized the error. While I can see how I made the error, it's a mistake that should not have occurred in the context of providing the public with a factual update. I apologize for any confusion brought about by that reference. Also, we still owe you some reports that were referenced last week. And we will be sure to have those uploaded to the website in the morning. Last night, I met with Rich Latart, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors. Rich Latart is an honorable longtime resident and has many years on the board. He recalls a couple of occasions in which a member of the public attended a meeting. The Board of Assessors is a fellow elected board, fully autonomous from the Select Board, but they are our peers. And the Select Board has an interest, though not always authority, in the functioning of all parts of our government. Last week's assessors meeting wasn't one of our finest moments. Going forward, the Chair has asked and Lou has accepted responsibility for facilitating the public portion of the Board of Assessors meetings. Lou will not attend their executive sessions or be a part of any discussion in which specific abatement applications are discussed. Lou will also work with Mr. Latart and the members of the Board of Assessors to help organize frequent meetings to assist the assessors review of abatement applications. To my neighbors and friends, we're navigating through a community crisis. This property value increase for many has been quite the hammer and wrench in your lives. We have read all of your emails and I've listened to your every word in public comments. I urge you that despite the extraordinary pain, frustration, hurt, and anger, to have faith that you live in the greatest country ever known to man. We are all imperfect, but live with a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And through our collective efforts, we will get through anything. A lot remains to be done. I don't personally believe that God will put more on us than we can bear. And I know that despite the difficulties of today and tomorrow, this too shall pass. Let's keep our head about things and in these challenging times, let us be what makes Lunenburg a desirable community to live and raise a family in. And with that, I will go to public comments from the board.
Do I go first?
If you, if you'd like, select woman stroke.
Um, I do, I just wanted to clarify something that was said in a public comment at the February sixteenth Finance Committee meeting in which Mrs. Bellotta spoke about. She said that she spoke with four assessors and and all of the appraisals that they that people received. And no assessor would ever give someone a one hundred and twenty-five percent increase to their community that their residents in their community they live in. If you want to get there somewhere, you go thirty, twenty, forty, and you grow them up to where you want to go. You do not go to one hundred and thirty-five percent. I'm just curious, is that actually something that can happen? And if so, then what happened to the other, the other portion of their bill? Who, who absorbs that portion of a tax bill if they're not covering their entire assessment? And they're not getting to where they should be assessed in a certain period of time? Who absorbs the, the, the money to get the town to two and a half percent?
Yeah, so Heather, I know this is a public comment, I will, we don't have this on the agenda anywhere, I will briefly.
Can we?
I can answer that question, though. When we met with the Department of Revenue, you know, some states do have a graduated way to increase taxes. Massachusetts is not one of those states and Massachusetts assessments are to be brought to one hundred percent or ninety to one hundred and ten percent of the fair market value every year. There is no system in which we can gradually increase assessments. This question was specifically asked by us, us being top Mr. Alonso, Vice Chair, Heather Lemieux, Town Manager, and I in a meeting with the Department of Revenue that included Chris Wilcox, who is the Bureau Chief for Assessments, as well as Becky Boucher, who is our local representative and others who I don't have their names in front of me. There is no system to gradually increase property taxes over time. I'm so, I'm sorry, there is no system to gradually increase valuations and apply them to property owners over time.
Okay. Um, the other thing, the other thing that was mentioned in her public comment was that a hundred and twenty-nine people were going to show up at town meeting and vote everything no. And that we wouldn't have a town budget and that we wouldn't have a town, town budget come July first, so it would be status quo like in quote COVID. And then we call it a day. If that were to happen, what is the scenario? What is the budget scenario? If everything is voted no at town meeting in May?
I think we can answer that question later in the agenda. Get to.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's on, on the radar. Because I'm just curious what would happen if that, that were to take place. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, select woman stroke. Any more public comments this evening from Mr. Dwyer or Mr. Franco? Mr. Franco?
Okay, yeah, that was two operations, so lowering the hand and turning on the mic. Okay. So I do have a question, sort of, I mean, a, a comment coupled with a question. So as long as we don't yet have contract, independent assessors available to us to get us through this abatement process. We have two factors that are sort of, not, not sort of, they're in direct tension with one another. There is getting the abatements in queue and processed intention with the desire for independent, the reasonable desire for independent assessment. So in the interest, I realize that the Board of Assessors is going to work on non-Lake abatements at this juncture, but in the interest of getting those abatement process at the Lake abatements in process, can we take the temperature or like figure a way of where maybe the existing Board of Assessors does, gets those going? And does an initial review of them and then they are subsequently, you know, sort of reviewed by independent assessors when they come in, just, just so we, we sort of kind of like, there's four hundred of these things, so, so they can be in process.
I take that comment, Mr. Franco, I think we can answer that in the agenda when we can probably get to that. I'll have to figure out where we can answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
And to be, to be clear, you know, I think the guidance that Heather Sro, Heather Lemieux has provided is related employee guidance. You know, we can't direct the Board of Assessors on what to do or how to do it. You know, we can certainly try to provide them with support. But Mr. Franco, as we get in later in the agenda, I, I do think that that's an important thing, whether in action items or somewhere else. And we need to get that addressed. Are there any other public comments this evening from the board?
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Any public comments from the public this evening? Carl and Phyllis, good to see you guys.
Good evening. Before I start my public comment, I kind of have a question about the agenda. There are items in four, five, six, and seven on tonight's agenda that I'm hopeful that questions from the public will be allowed. So I'm hoping that you'll do that. Onto my comment. As pointed out by Vice Chair Alonso and others, the FY thirteen property tax abatement process is going to cost the town a great deal of money as well as an immeasurable loss of goodwill and trust of residents in our town government. Longer this drags on, but greater the cost. Not only will residents be increasingly stressed, I mean, look at that family that sold their house already and burdened with the extreme increase in property taxes and the stress around the investigation. The town will be increasingly bombarded with requests for documents and other issues related to this mess. And of course, town government will need to seek the help of our legal team. And that's going to cost money. Lots of our tax dollars going out the window. There are several steps that can be taken now to speed up this process. During the public comment portion of their last meeting, the Board of Assessors clearly stated there's no policy in place yet for dealing with the waterfront front property abatement requests. Including, will the homeowner be made aware of the timing of the inspection? Will the abatement hearing be an open or executive session? They've done both in the past. Will he, she be able to attend the hearing on his or her application? Will homeowners have the opportunity to address the Board of Assessors before the decision has been made? All of this is still up in the air. To repeat my request made at the, at your two twenty-one meeting, the Select Board is respectfully requested to set up a public meeting as soon as possible with the Board of Assessors as called for in the Charter to assist them in establishing this policy. Two, the D O R is silent on the requirement for inspections for abatement applications at the town level. It's left to municipalities to determine if inspections are necessary. Clearly, it follows that the town can determine, determine that land inspections alone may be used, which in this case just makes sense. Most of the property waterfront property owners' issues with the FY twenty-three property tax assessments are with the a hundred and thirty-five percent land value increase. If the town focuses on inspecting the land excluding the homes, the process will be greatly speeded up. An assessor could visit many more homes per day when only the land value is being challenged. Three, assessment abatement hearings would also therefore be speeded up when the land is the only issue in question. Four, the Board of Assessors stated in somehow they believed in during their two twenty-two meeting that they've been instructed by the Town Manager and Select Board that although non-waterfront abatement requests may proceed, no waterfront property a babe, no waterfront property abatement requests may. Really? Now, if the Town Manager and the Select Board didn't tell them they couldn't, who did? They have that feeling that they can't, and I think you even expressed that they can't. So whose idea is that? Again, who or what does this serve? In the interest of speeding up this process as selectman, select person Franco mentioned, the Board of Assessors should be immediately allowed to get to work on the waterfront abatement request. Time is money and it's our money that will be squandered. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl and or and Phyllis, really Phyllis for those comments. We do not direct the Board of Assessors. I, I think what I was trying to express in my public comment is that normally the principal assessor is a part of the abatement process. I think that because of the public outcry about the way that abatements have gone, that the decision was made by the Select Board pretty quickly that we were going to work to bring in additional independent assessors to assist the Board of Assessors with their lakeside abatements. Certainly, they are capable and able to do whatever they want to do. That is the offer that we have made to try to help knowing that there's a lot of work for them to do and trying to be mindful of the public interest. But, but yeah, I, I heard that meeting as well. I was a little surprised by some of the comments that were stated at that meeting. And we, we cannot issue them directives and we have not issued them directives. We cer, I certainly have made suggestions to them, but I have not suggested on how they are to specifically go about abatements in, in the sense of not conducting like, like abatements yet. I, I don't, I don't fully understand what the process that they normally undertake is. As you know, that's normally handled in executive session. You know, it's just not something that on the Select Board that we, we get in, we get into, it's not our burden. Are there any other public comments this evening from the public? I will come back to you guys, but any other public comments? All right, we'll take our last public comments from Carl or Phyllis.
Yes, Carl this time, Carl up fifty Sunset Lane. I'm, I, I am confused because the Board of Assessors is clearly on hold from somewhere, and if it's not from the selectmen and not from the town manager, I don't know where that's from, they should be freed up and can start assessments. My comment, though, is that I am becoming increasingly concerned about the objectivity of the Select Board's investigation team. Within the last two weeks, members of both the Select Board and the Board of Assessors have expressed the opinion that the lakefront property have been undervalued for assessment purposes for the last ten years. Even going so far as to say, and I quote, that the town has been subsidizing Lake homeowners for ten years. First, there has been no data provided to the public to back up these statements. In fact, a thorough analysis has been submitted to this Select Board this week that clearly shows for the last four years, lakefront properties were properly assessed per the D O R guidelines. Also, that the rate of increase in assessments for the lake properties has exceeded the increase for non-Lake front properties, which is understandable. But certainly doesn't indicate under assessment. Second, the Select Board's investigation is still ongoing and yet it is apparent from the reports that some conclusions are already being made. Regarding the assessment process, I've looked at the twenty twenty qualified sales, twenty twenty-one, but the twenty twenty qualified sales. And what, what I've observed is first, of the five twenty twenty qualified sales the town used in this process, all five fall in line with the D O I requirements when compared to the assessed values in twenty twenty-two. Again, there is no under evaluation of these lakefront properties in twenty twenty-two and a significant increase would not be expected. Two, after our principal assessor applied the factors for determining, the factors that were determined for twenty twenty-three based solely on the twenty twenty-one sales, these five properties assessed value increased by more than fifty percent during the following year. As a result, the assessed value for those five properties is now forty-two to eighty percent above the actual sell price for those properties less than one year prior. Unlikely that their values increased by that much. So these assessments that came out of the process have got to be an error. And they're in the same kind of error that all the rest of us are experiencing. How is it possible that these new assessments, assessment results could claim to support the twenty-three, twenty-three process as the assessor claims? Are you? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I missed number two. Finally, the D O R process, I think there are two fundamental things that I hope this investigation is running down, and I think they're very focused. The D O R process was not followed. The D O O process, our process requires when there are less than ten qualified sales in the relevant year, I quote, twenty-four months of sales, which in this case would be twenty-one and twenty, must be analyzed. According to the principal assessor, I have in writing, I quote, twenty twenty individual, single-family sales were not included in analysis, only used to further support the findings after the fact. Two, the process was not validated. Even if using the principal assess's strategy was correct, was correct to use twenty twenty sales data after the fact to validate the process instead of per the D O R guidelines, there is still a problem. How could the new assessments of the twenty twenty properties in this validation process as just noted have, have validated the process? In fact, it should have been a big red flag that the process was not validated, that something was wrong with the analysis and therefore the results. And the problem with the analysis is it did not comply with D O R. It did not use those five properties in the base analysis to determine the factors used to reassess properties. Please consider this data and comments in your process and work with the B O A to seek relief from the D O R based on the clerical error of the process, of the principal assessor omitting the twenty twenty qualified sales in the analysis. And that is a clerical error that should meet your requirements. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Luck for those comments. You know, I want to offer two. There was, was never a time in any prior meeting in which any member of the investigative team stated that they believe that the about properties and index one were under value. That just didn't happen. What I did do last week was I provided a report that, you know, in the investigative updates that we're doing, we're trying to be transparent and, and making everyone aware of the information that we are receiving. And, and it was stated that we'll speaking with all of our previous assessors that they did have that belief. Again, that was, that should be taken as an anecdotal statement in the interview. It should not be assumed to be a factual statement until we conclude the investigation or able to establish facts supported by evidence, you know, that was an update. You know, the town of Lunenburg, we are not a regulatory agency, we are not D O R. I do understand what's being said and, and I don't know how much clearer I can be in saying that a clerical error, as we understand it, cannot, there will be no townwide reassessment in Lunenburg. That process is not able to be reopened. There is no way to reopen the assessment process in Lunenburg. I know I've said this several times, but I just want to make it abundantly clear that no matter what we discover, no matter what we find, we cannot reopen the reassessment process. So if there was a clerical error that was identified, of course, we would have been able to reissue tax bills. We provided a previous example as a clerical error being, you know, sending out fiscal year twenty-two tax bills instead of fiscal year twenty-three. When it gets into the arithmetic, the mathematics that are involved here, those are not identified as being clerical errors. And so the abatement process as written in statutory law is the only process. Now, if anyone else is aware of, of some legislation and are willing to provide that specific legislation to us, where in Mass Journal Law you have found some alternative guidance that is conflictual with what D O R has directly told us and what our council has told us, we will absolutely entertain that and consider that. At this point, as told to us by Mass D O R and by our council, the statutory language is very clear and providing the abatement process as the process for residents to undergo. I know it's not what people want to hear, it is the process. So again, if there is an alternative solution that someone identifies in Master Law, we certainly will entertain that. So I want to, you know, we're to close public comments. And I want to thank everyone who had the opportunity tonight to offer them, you know, I think it's a healthy part of keeping the community engaged by continuing to provide routine updates, having these, having communications come in via email. We will continue to work to make sure that we're doing all that we can for our residents to really get to the bottom of what happened. So that way, you know, we understand, we all understand the impact here. With that, I want to turn it over. We're a little late here. I want to turn it over to our appointments here. So we do have an appointment tonight at seven-ten, a presentation from DPW Director on the pavement management plan. And then we will, we'll have a seven-thirty, we're also late for, followed by a presentation from the trash recycling consultant on the pay-as-you-through program. So Heather, do you want to introduce this with Bill or is Bill here with us?
Phil is here with us.
There you go. Good to see you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I'll, I'll start off for Bill. Um, so I asked Bill to come tonight. Bills are been our D P W director since May.
May.
And, and um. Our pavement management plan previously approved is coming to an end. And as previously reported to the board, uh, working with Bill, we um. Found a company to do an updated plan, beta. And they have completed their work and Bill will present their findings and the, the plan going forward. And how that would be funded. So. Bill, do you want me to share the presentation at this time?
I do. Okay. It just, my computer just said the battery is dying, so I have a second computer set up. I'm going to try to open that one. And switch over if, I'm so sorry. Of course, it has to happen right now.
Hey, Bill, you know, I, I understand these things happen. Does it make sense for us to go to our next appointment to come back to you? We don't like, we can also wait another minute. I just don't know how quick this is, uh.
It's opening, so let's see. Okay, here it is.
It's been a while, we've done a Zoom meetings, so I know it's kind of a throwback for us who all met for, you know, all that time only on Zoom. Nope.
Okay, how about now?
Um, you're getting a lot of feedback, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, how about now?
That's much better. All right, thanks, Bill.
I am so sorry. Okay. So I'm here to talk about the, the new pavement management plan, which will begin this fiscal year and run through fiscal twenty seven. So what is a pavement management plan? So pavement management plan is a process of planning. The maintenance and repair of a network of roads to optimize pavement conditions over the entire network. And pavement management plan is a form of asset management which seeks to optimize life cycles. Of the roads. By sustaining a desired target condition instead of going worse the first. So why do we use a pavement management plan? It's a tool used to aid in pavement management decisions. That the plan models future payment deterioration, which is due to traffic and weather and. It recommends maintenance and repairs of the roads. Based on the type of the road, the age of the road, the condition of the pavement. The pavement management plan incorporates lifecycle costs into a more systematic approach to minor and major road maintenance. And reconstruction projects. So the needs of the entire network. As well as the budget projections are considered before projects are executed. So. On this slide here, why do we use the pavement management plan? It shows a pavement deterioration curve. So on the left vertical. Side is the pavement condition rated from zero to a hundred. We want to be closest to a hundred because, because as you could see, the cost of maintenance and repairs. Is much cheaper when you're at the top of the chart. It's as little as seventy five dollars, seventy five cents per square. Yard for routine maintenance. But as you go down the chart, down the curve, you can get into major rehabilitation. It, it could cost as much as forty eight dollars per square yard for major rehab. So we definitely want to stay near the top of the chart. So. So Lunenburg's been, uh, good about having a pavement management plan over the years. Um, from what I could see, there was the first plan in two thousand nine. And that then that plan was updated again in two thousand fifteen. And that's the plan that's ending soon, well, ending in this fiscal year twenty three. And that plan included the four million dollar photo authorized debt exclusion. So the goal of that plan was to achieve an over. Overall townwide road surface rating of between seventy two and seventy five out of a hundred. So this July, we contracted with Beta Group, which is a consulting firm that specializes. And among other things in pavement management plans and um. They provided us with a new plan, new pavement management plan. So Beta went out and they surveyed all the roads and they came back with this, an overall road surface rating of. Eighty four point seventy five, which is well above our goal of seventy five. And just the project manager for Beta who's. Been doing this for a while, said that's one of the highest scores he's ever seen in New England, so. Something that the, the town should be proud of. So, and. And I just noted that the success of the, the pavement management, management plan justifies the investment. That four million dollar investment that the town has made into the roads. So. If anybody's interested on how the pavement management plan works, I, I put together some steps. The first part was, uh, field data collection. They used a LiDAR sensor, which is a type of radar. Um, people may have seen it, it was a car with, you know, like the Google cars you see. With the, uh, sensors on the roof, they went around, checked every road. And then they have their proprietary, um. Artificial intelligence, machine learning technology used to identify the. Distresses in the road, it sees cracks, it sees potholes, it sees crack sealing and patches. And it actually looks at the pavement oxidation. Which is important because when that roads get older, they, they're not as soft anymore. And that's when they start to crack and open up. So. From there, they. Rated all the roads, they actually rated every segment of every road. On a scale of one to a hundred. From there, each roadway was placed into a roadway category, which I'll describe in a little bit. And these categories describe what type of repairs should be performed. The next step is they provided us with software. It was, uh. Un-hosted on the Mast Arts G I S website. And. It, that was a free for us to, to be on that website, which was good. The software gives all kinds of different reports. You can list the roads alphabetically by their. You know, type of, uh, rating they had, um, condition they had. What kind of repairs you can look at it many, many ways. It also evaluates the current maintenance budget, so I, I gave them our projected budgets for the next five years. Um. So the way they do it is they, they come up with a cost benefit value. So they look at what type of road is it, is it a major collector type of road, is it a, a cul-de-sac? Um, and then they look at the condition of the road. So a little cul-de-sac that's in good condition. The cost benefit value is going to be very small. Uh, road like say Lancaster Road, which. Most people in town will drive on and it maybe say it's in tough condition, that'd be ranked very high. So from there, oh, the, the software can also run, um. It can forecast models, so. On this, uh, the capital plan that they provided with us, to us. I asked them to run a, a model on that for the, the first year to see what, what would happen if we did. All the suggested work, where would our overall rating come out? So it's, it's a very powerful tool. And the next slide shows what the, it's a screenshot of what the, um. The online software looks like, it's, they call it my, manage my roads platform. So right there in the middle is a map, you can click on the map on any road. Um, below it's hard to see, um, this is a listing of all the roads with all the different values that they've calculated, uh. The road segment, the. Um, the road conditions, the cost benefit values. On the. And on the left and right, they call them widgets. It shows an estimated backlog of, of work, you know, to get us to a hundred percent. Would be about six million dollars. Um. It's, 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 again, it's powerful. Now, we can go to the next slide. This explains it a little bit, the. All the maps, they're color coded by categories, or you could look at a repair history, we give them. Uh, history of when each of our roads was paved in the last, well, almost ten years. So that's all in there. Um, you can look at it a different way, color coded, um, capital improvement plan. And. They took photos of the roads every twenty feet, so. If I have to go in and, and look at a specific location, there's a photo there. Uh, on the bottom where it was. The street segments are listed, listed, that gives all the data, the, the rating, the benefit value. Cost, it gives, uh, cost, the roadway class. In. And again, on the left and the right with the widgets, with the, the estimated cost backlog, total miles, miles of repair. Categories and. And more. And then they gave us another webpage, they call it the pavement portal. And again, some of the same data, you know, that gives the baseline miles of roadway, we have the overall. Condition rating, which again was eighty four point seven five when the inspection was done. And again, the backlog and further down on that page was. A list of reports and maps, there's. Uh, you can look at the data any way you want, it. You know, again, alphabetically by condition, by cost benefit value, this. We can look at it anyway. So. This is a breakdown of, of where we're at now, so. Major rehab is only two point five eight miles. But because it's, you know, almost forty eight dollars per square yard, you could see it's one point five million dollars. Where the routine maintenance is twenty nine miles and then to do that work would only be two hundred ninety six thousand dollars. So again, we want to be in good shape, so we can just do that routine maintenance to. Keep our cost down while at the same time keeping our roads in good shape. Uh, talked about the repair categories. Uh, this one's awful small, so is the, the major rehab. In this, it lists different kind of major rehab, the, the most common type would be a reclamation project. Uh, minor rehabs, that's, that would be more of the, the mill and pave, which. We've seen a lot of in, in town the last few years. And then the routine maintenance is more of, uh, of seals or. Um, kind of crack sealing. And then, uh. Yeah, okay. And then this next slide is the, just they look at. The capital improvement plan that they came up with for the next five years. Heather, can you zoom in, can make it bigger? All right. And maybe go up to the last slide. There. Excellent, so. Like I said, I gave them our budgets for the next five years and they put together a list of roads and, um. To, to, um, work on in each year. So. The, we're just look at twenty twenty three, they have, uh, a fog seal, which is just a routine maintenance type of work. And. They have four point twenty five miles and it's only ninety nine thousand dollars. And then, again, the mill and overlay. That's only one point five nine miles. Now it's. Four hundred thousand, over four hundred thousand dollars. Again, showing that we want to be in good shape. All right, and then I put in the. Proposed capital improvement plan for twenty twenty three to break down in each road that they recommended and what repair type, so. Uh, I think I counted, it was thirteen different roads, we're planning on doing a. Uh, fog sale, which is rather inexpensive. But it'll, again, it'll coat the road, it'll. Stop the slow, slow down the oxidation in the road, keep the asphalt pliable and, and stop it from. Drying out and getting hard and coming apart on us. So thinking back to that curve. We put the fog seal on, it moves us back up that curve. So. We get more years out of the road. And again, that's, this is the continuation of the twenty twenty three plan. So how is the work completed? Um, we use contractors, so. We'll be putting out contracts for milling, paving, and the work that goes along with that is drainage structure adjustments, uh, line painting. And traffic controls. And also the D P W crews. They patch potholes with hot mix asphalt or coal patch as needed. And this is something that was amazing. We all believe. We have only used two tons of coal patch this winter. Sometimes they use two tons of coal patch every week, sometimes probably every day throughout the winter. So that just shows, you know, we've done a great job and we want to keep doing a great job going forward. All right, and then we'll look at. Funding. So again, the, the blue columns is what the new pavement management plan. Suggests for spending. And the green is the operational budget, the D B W operational budget for pavement management. And the yellow is chapter ninety funding, which we can use. So. Again, I told them what our budgets were, so they tried to come in very close, so. We won't have to go using chapter ninety money all that much. And this, I just, another way to look at it, instead of the column type graph, it's, it's a line graph. So the orange line is our budget. The, the blue line is the suggested pavement management plan, and you could see they're very close, so we won't have to. Use up our chapter money, chapter ninety money all that much. So after the five years. What do we look at? So. I asked Beta to run a projection. If we follow the plan as they've put it together. They ran a scenario and it showed where we'd only drop four points in our overall roadway surface rating. So it would be at eighty point seventy five, which is still well above our goal of seventy five, seventy five. So. If, if we wanted to, we could be more aggressive, do some more roads using our chapter ninety funding. Uh, we have about a million dollars there, so we could do more. And there might be some roads we would want to do, um. The, the D P W crews, they're telling me there's. The the DBW crews, they're telling me there's there's a couple of roads that uh the the winter weather wasn't so kind to, so. They're starting to fall apart a little bit, so maybe we want to. Move those roads up. Onto the plan or up a year or two. And we would have the funds to do it and would still keep our roads in good shape. So. Beta Group um recommends scanning the roads every three to five years. Um I would recommend that we do it. You know, towards the end of the plan in the fifth year. Um. Because we're in good shape, I don't I don't think we'll have to do it in three years. After they scan them again, we can have them develop the plan for the next five years. And. So I took a look at the old plan from twenty fifteen. To make sure all the roads were done and there's there's a number of roads that were skipped. Including Holman Street and Hillside Drive. Um. Some of these roads like Holman Street is the section where the the bridge is closed. So there's very little traffic there, so I could see why that was skipped. Uh Hillside Drive, Fairview Road, Easterbrook Road. Those were skipped. Um. Their cul-de-sacs, there's very little traffic on them. Uh Lemmon's to Shirley Road was skipped. And the. Thought on that one was the big warehouse was going in, they weren't sure. What was going to happen there, so they they held off on that. And then there was three roads scheduled for this year, West Townsend Road, a piece of it. Uh Pioneer Drive and Upland Ave. So comparing that to the new plan. Um. Holman Street. It's uh. Roadway service rating was pretty low, forty six. So that was in the plan for twenty twenty five of reclamation project. Um. Hillside Drive and Fairview Road and Easterbrook Road. Their road service rating was in the sixties, so not too bad. So. Because of the the cost benefit value, they didn't even fall into the five year plan. Uh Lemmon's to Shirley Road that had a lower. Um roadway service rating, so. That was put into the plan in two pieces. To stay within the budget. And so this year and next year. West Townsend Road was. Again, um that was scheduled in twenty twenty seven. Pioneer Drive did. Did not even fall into the plan, but that's one I think we might want to reconsider and bump up. Because it's it's in tough shape. So. Roadway service rating of forty four. And Upland Ave. Was scheduled for twenty twenty six. So any questions or comments?
Thank you, thank you, Bill, for that presentation, I want to go to the members of the. Board to any questions coming from them, uh starting with select women's troika. It's like no questions from Heather, any any from selectmen on the wire?
I have no questions, uh I just want to uh remark that that's a uh fantastic presentation. And I think uh the results of that um. Review of our roads confirms what everybody knows who who's driving around, that we really do have uh very good roads for the most part in Lumber. So I appreciate the efforts of the DPW and uh the DPW Director, thank you.
Right. Uh Mr. Franco?
I have no questions, but I concur with Mr. Dwyer's comments and thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, Bill, again, thank you for I'm gonna echo all the other members' comments, thank you as well for the presentation, I do have a couple of questions for you though.
Okay.
Um are all the roads that you identified, I know that we have a lot of private roads here in town. Are all the roads that you identified as part of the pavement management plan, just confirm, are they all the public roads?
That is correct, they are all the public roads.
Okay. And uh one of the concerns that we had vocalized this year was that we had separated out line striping from the. Um pavement management plan and and had that kind of handled separately. Is the intent to build that into the pavement management plan, I'm not sure how that meets with operational or capital, but. Um is that your intent or any any comments there?
Yes, the intent is to put together a comprehensive contract. That will include all the milling, the paving. The um. Drainage structure adjustment and the line striping, so it'd be bid. By one. Prime contractor, I'm sure they'll use subs for some of the other work. Um there will be language in those contracts that. Uh say something like if the. Roads aren't painted within, say, three weeks, we will start um. Uh assessing penalties, um I'm thinking. Now maybe five hundred dollars a day until it gets done.
Yeah, I think that that's. I think that's a good motivator, um you know, you know, given how many months it took this year, and I know, you know, companies um. So that'd be really good, so thank you for that. Um. I think that's. Okay. Think that that hits all of my questions or call, oh yeah, the one other comment. So in the current rating system, and I want to be mindful that, you know, obviously you're having someone say, look, most communities are not at eighty four point seven five. Uh that that's one of the highs that they've seen, so they've put together a plan. Um but you know, my concern is that, you know, will residents notice a decrease? If we're going from eighty four, basically eighty five to eighty, um will that be a decrease in the quality of the roads and what does that mean? That the next pavement management plan will include more substantial type work that could generate a higher cost?
I don't think you're gonna see significant differences. Um. In roadway quality, that there's always going to be roads that that fall apart on us, and like I was saying, the guys have been telling me, there's a couple of roads that the. The winter wasn't so kind to. You'll see that, but overall, you're not going to see that much difference. Um but. Then towards your other question, the idea is that we'll keep doing the routine type maintenance to. To keep the roads in good condition, I mean, it it won't last forever. But we'll keep pushing up the chart as as far as we can. For as long as we can.
And I I guess I do have another question, you know, um. After becoming a selectman, I've realized I have some peeves, um I think everyone knows how I feel about alcohol. Um and uh and the other one is storm drain covers. Uh which I didn't realize was a concern of mine until I lived on a dirt road in Mass Ave, got repaved, and the storm drains weren't cleaned. And so the driveway started washing away, I just want to just get some clarity from you on the plan in terms of. Uh you know, I think that on the town roads, things go well, but the state roads, you know, there's often some challenges. Um just key, would you mind just speaking a little bit to the storm drain covers themselves? And how often those are being cleaned to help facilitate the stormwater management plan?
Okay, so. My goal is to clean. Get clean up twenty five percent of the catch basins in town per year. It's uh we're not there yet. Um. We do have a couple of a new heavy equipment operators, we're still trying to hire one more. Uh so we're a little better shape than last year. Um. I think we can, we're we're definitely going to do more this year. Uh if. I think in your case, uh sometimes like in the fall and after storms, some of the covers get. Uh blocked with leaves and sticks and debris. Uh. Some of the storms this year, right after the storms, the the next few days, we ran around clearing those covers and opening up drainage. So we're pretty cognitiv- as that and we try to stay on top of it the best we can.
All right, thank you, Bill, um. And twenty five percent is great, you know, I know the covers probably need to be cleaned a little more often than that, especially seasonally. Um and I do my share, I do get out on the main road and with my shovel and clean out the grates. Uh that are near me, because I do get it, you know, we all can do a little bit ourselves to help out. Um and so I I certainly get it, Bill, thank you so much for this presentation today, I'm going to turn it back to Heather for any. Of um so uh the town manager's uh comments. Uh or uh you know, kind of close this out and introduce our next topic on the agenda, thank you so much, Bill. Oh, I did get a request from residents to be able to ask questions, but I want to turn to the town manager for any of her questions. And then we will give some residents the opportunity if they have any to ask a question here.
I don't have any questions, just appreciation for Bill for putting this presentation together. Um I know this is one of our goals. Um and a continuation of our pavement management plan and keeping the status of our roads in very good condition, so I want to thank him. And all the staff at the DPW for keeping that up, that's all.
All right, thank you, Heather, um selectwoman luck.
Um, thank you. I know that there are roads that were not paved in the five year plan and are not aren't on this list either. Um Sunset Lane and Flat Hill Road in that I are two roads that I know of. That were not paved, um when will they be taken care of?
Okay, I will have to look at the plan to see where they fall, I don't have it memorized at the moment, but.
But do you know how many roads are in that category that weren't taken care of during the pavement management plan and are there very many?
No, the the last plan was pretty comprehensive, um. I don't know. How many were. Not on that plan. Um. I do intend to post the new plan in the capital improvement plan on our website, so. You can look for that.
Thank you.
I'm sure I could answer your question specifically later.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any other questions for Mr. Bernard? All right, seeing now, well, Bill, thank you again for your time, please, on behalf of the board, give our regards to Mrs. Bernard. Uh definitely was a pleasure meeting her, I do see kind of one late break question coming in here. We have someone on the phone call uh with a number that starts with four hundred and nine seven four hundred, um if you can go ahead and uh. Ask your question.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, Rhonda, go ahead.
Hello? Okay, it's Rhonda Lucio, one eighty one Reservoir Road. Um I'm just curious, are we still planning to? Pay the snow and ice deficit out of the pavement management plan this year?
I think that's a question to the town manager, uh mostly, Heather.
So that was is the current um plan to cover the deficit unless other available funding. Is available. Um. We're reviewing the what. Is available at the moment in pavement management in the operating budget, this is not the debt exclusion amount, I just want to make. Sure that's clear and that's been fully expended, this is the annual operating. Pavement Management Line. Um that there is uh funding would be funding available to do what is in the plan. As well as cover the deficit.
Rhonda, you have a follow up?
Um, well, just I'm assuming after tonight, the deficit has gone up. After the last twenty four hours too, so I'm just hoping that doesn't impact. You know, what we can do. Through the pavement management plan. That's all. Oh, and the other comment, I'm at a disadvantage because I was unable to see the um. The. Slides because. Uh the meeting keeps going in and out. Just to make you aware.
Yeah, thank you, Rhonda, yeah, we did, I did receive and the town manager also received a communication from the public, we also noticed the influx of people. Uh coming into the Zoom meeting, uh we are aware that there's some connection issue, uh Pat was going to Town Hall to reboot. Um some some stuff, we'll get the system running better.
It should be resolved at this.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any remaining? Thank you, Rhonda, uh any remaining questions for Bill? Okay, going once here, going twice, all right, thank you again, Bill, again, please give our regards to Mrs. Bernard and have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So to Heather, if you wouldn't mind introducing um um the next uh appointment that we have on our agenda.
So our next appointment is with Mr. Jamie Toll. He was hired by the town to do consulting for trash and recycling. Coordination and outreach, and so tonight he'll just um present uh what he's been working on. As far as that service and some information regarding that pay as you throw program and maybe some thoughts to uh con. Uh consider as we move forward in the the program. Would you like me to share the screen?
Yes, please. Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh. Uh for for putting me on the agenda, this is kind of a result of your. Uh discussion at the select board meeting of January thirty first, where after the town manager meeting. Uh the select board had a discussion about the trash and recycling program, and I asked Heather to. Try to get me on the agenda to do a just a board kind of check in. Um what I'm going to try to accomplish in a relatively short period of time, the agenda for tonight. Uh we will be, go ahead, Heather. Um. Okay, uh an overview of the program objectives, uh an update on the Harvey contract specifically. Uh in relation to some service issues that we had at the end of December, beginning of January. Uh so some discussion about bags and barrels and stickers. Uh the various uh items that you talked about. Uh in your uh conversation after the town manager meeting. I'd like to talk a little bit about communications and social media. And then have a a short discussion and answer any questions that you may have. Uh by way of introduction, uh what I've been assigned to do is to to review current trash and recycling uh. Activities in the town and to use that data and stakeholder input. Uh to allow the town to make informed decisions about future objectives. And suggest ways to communicate those objectives to the various stakeholders. Um. One of the things you have to start with is to think about what are your real objectives, it's very easy to write down a list of objectives. But uh just to test a few. Um is our main objective to to dispose of our waste at a at a break even cost? Uh or uh for those that are very concerned about the environment, is it to increase recycling? And to get our citizens to do recycling at any cost? Um. Uh is it more increased recycling within some acceptable cost? Uh or is it really all about resident delight, residents uh satisfaction? With the whole waste disposal function, if the residents are happy that they're. Uh the stuff they don't want anymore, whether it be trash or recycling disappears on time. Uh is that is that what we're really looking for? And of course, the the answer is it's some. Defined blending of those objectives, and that's what I I'd like to talk about uh this evening. Uh just in terms of the pay as you throw part of the program, it's designed to be to uh be a break even program, this is. The yellow bags and the fact that we sell the yellow bags hoping to recoup the costs of. Taking those yellow bags and making them disappear. Uh our uh our full year with the data is from July twenty one to June twenty two. And I have uh a partial year of data from July twenty two to calendar December twenty two. We do in fact break even in the in the full year data, we we actually on a on hauling costs of almost four hundred thousand dollars. Uh we sold bags and uh recognized net income of four hundred and thirty six and therefore actually exceeded. Uh our uh costs by thirty nine thousand and uh year to date. From July through December, our our costs have committed two hundred sixteen K. And our net income to date is or through that period is two hundred. And there's really not, there's not a concern, even even though the math works out slightly behind, uh there's a little imbalance between when we. Get billed for the hauling and when we recognize income for the bags, so uh I I don't have any concern that we're not going to. Continue to break even on this, on the uh pay as you throw portion of the program. Um. When we look at two year stats for trash versus recycling. Uh what we see is there is no trend. Uh this this data tells me that, you know, we're not going in any particular direction, we're, you know. Trash isn't increasing or decreasing, recycling isn't increasing or decreasing. It does have its ups and downs, I've noticed it is seasonal, it's impacted by uh holidays like Christmas. It's impacted by summer vacations, et cetera, but it it doesn't seem to be a trend line. So while we. So while we we analyze the data and we we and we continually analyze the data against each other, trash versus recycling and vice versa. It it really doesn't show us anything from a from a trend point of view. Um, what I really wanted to talk about was based on the discussion that you folks have, and that's, you know, what what are we hearing? Both in, you know, in terms of on the street or in like social media, uh, you know, bags, barrels, stickers. Um, here's here's the skinny. Bag quality and size has improved. There there's. There's noise in the system and has been for quite a while that the bags were kind of inferior uh quality and they uh. And they really weren't the right size. They didn't fit uh on their barrels, uh, thanks to a a lot of. Uh, squeaky wheel from Selectman Alonso, the size got fixed. And thanks to some uh real good effort from the town manager working uh through the DPW people, uh, the quality of the bags got fixed. And right now we have a very good relationship with our bag vendor. Uh, and the truth of matter is we have very little complaints on the bag size, so a lot of that is kind of old, old data. Uh, we hear questions about should we go to stickers instead of bags, and I I will talk about that a little bit. It's a possibility. There's some pros and cons to it. I don't know that it's earth shaking either way. Um, covered containers, we hear a lot of noise about gee, if uh. Uh, if the if the containers aren't covered, particularly recycling containers, the. The trash blows all over the street and 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 it it makes for a mess. Uh, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as well as we get to the next couple of slides. There's a kind of a reality factor that. When the trash doesn't get picked up, when we have difficulties that were a day or two late, we have to deal with critter problems getting into the bags. Uh, but for the most part, uh, if if we're on schedule and uh stuff goes out in the morning, gets picked up that day. We tend not to have too much of a problem with uh uh with debris on the street. The uh, the haulers have been instructed and they're pretty good about picking up after themselves. If they create the mess, they tend to to pick it up. Uh, Harvey has, in fact, responded to our service problems from late December and January. Uh, the DPW manager uh reminded them of their contractual obligation. We have a a pretty good relationship with the people at Harvey. Uh, they are taking several uh measures to improve. Uh, their uh transfer station in Fitchburg, their main facility is in the Westboro area, but they do have a. A transfer station in Fitchburg. They're moving to Leominster. I expect them to open their new facility. Actually, they're already. But I expect them to have a grand opening in early March. They have bought some new equipment. They've done some hiring. Uh, and there they seem to be past their dilemmas that we saw in January and February and our kind of complaints have. Have settled down quite a bit. Uh, you know, the weather the last two weeks has put us a little bit behind on a couple of days, but the. Uh, the calls that my office has received and the DPW offices received, they're pretty minimal and are pretty easy to have. Uh, handled and and made sure we did callbacks and and pickups on any missed uh areas. Uh, the other thing is, you know, there's a reality versus perception problem. I, you know, I'll talk about social media in a second. But a lot of times you'll see something on social media and somebody will be complaining about waste management. Well, we don't use waste management. Uh, waste management would either be a Fitchburg hauler. Uh, therefore, it's probably a a resident of Fitchburg, or it's a private contract that someone has with with waste management. And uh, their problems are with their personal private contract. Uh, our our vendor is Harvey, and I'll talk a little bit about uh their trucks and their schedules as we go a little bit further. This is really the slide that I want to spend a certain amount of time on. Uh, this is the way we measure the success of our pay as you throw program. And what it amounts to is a look at the amount of trash. Uh, this is not recyclables, it's trash, uh, that gets created in different methods. If you start on the left, that is a bag system. And it is a drop off bag system that that this, all this data comes from a uh. A statewide survey that was done in twenty twenty-one, asking each town to fill out a questionnaire on. On quite a bit of information about how many residents they had, what kind of service they have, whether it's weekly, bi-weekly, do they use bags? Do they use barrels, et cetera? And this is the data that was compiled, so that the far left hand bar is towns that use bags. And towns that you have to go drop it off someplace. And they, of course, because that's somewhat inconvenient, they, of course, have the lowest uh pounds. Uh, pounds of trash per household. Um, and uh, it's at ten. I can't see this in the dark yet, ten sixty-six. We're in the next column. The next column is towns that use bags, but we have curbside pickup. So we live in that second column, and the average for the state is is uh twelve hundred and seventy pounds per household. The Lunenburg number in that study uh was eight hundred and sixty-four pounds per household. So considerably better than the average, uh, quite impressive, frankly. Uh, the Lunenburg number uh currently is running at eight ninety-four. Where I don't have the rest of the state data, it's still, it still is considerably lower than average. The third column are towns that use uh thirty-five gallon carts for their trash. Now, that's not the size of a a regular big cart. And when I talk carts, this is kind of what I'm talking about. Things like this. There would be some towns use recycling and trash carts that. I gotta get in front of the camera. There looks something like this. These are thirty-five gallons, obviously. Uh, but uh, the towns that use them and and then two examples are uh in the third column. Are thirty-five gallon carts uh that pick up a weekly gardener. Uh, and Shirley, actually, they don't use thirty-five, they use sixty-five. They live in the fourth column. We don't have any local towns in the third column. Nobody uses a small cart. Uh, the the fourth column from the left is uh sixty-five gallon carts and Shirley and Gardner are in that category. And they have uh twelve hundred and forty-nine pounds per household for Gardner and fourteen hundred pounds per household for. For Shirley. Shirley just introduced the carts, and we'll talk a little bit about the cost. Um. Uh, for that as well. We pay as you throw, so as a result, we we have no cost in in the towns that use carts. Uh, in uh, residents are required to pay anywhere from sixty to a hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, per quarter, either month or quarter, depending on their their deal with their particular hauler uh for those carts. And by the way, I I I miss towns and Townsend lives in the same column we do. They do do bags. Now, they do have a restriction. You can only put two, you put two bags out per week on the town's dime. And then they have uh overflow bags for three fifty apiece for anything over that. Okay, uh, next slide. I mean, what your goals are and what your uh objectives are for your trash and rehauling. Uh, and recycling program depends on where you sit. So I want to take a look at various stakeholders' points of view. The first one I'll look at is uh the Mast D E P. So next slide, we slide ten. Now, obviously Mast D E P is 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 concerned about recycling. Uh, they think recycling is the goal and the only goal. Uh, they are continually encouraging towns to pursue grant money for recycling efforts, which we do. Uh, but it it doesn't uh cover all of our recycling efforts. Uh, they are kind of responsible for uh various waste bans. The two, the two we saw most recently were. Uh, mattresses and textiles, which created huge problems for a lot of towns. Uh, didn't really create a problem for us because we never took uh mattresses. And we always, we always took textiles as part of our trash, not as part of our recycling. Uh, but some towns had been taking them and now couldn't put them uh couldn't put them anywhere and they had a. Uh, good uh, have an additional cost to get rid of them. Uh, in addition, their point of view is to have strict oversight over your hauler. Uh, their relationship is to kind of uh audit and ensure contract compliance uh. With the with the haulers, uh, review logs, uh, make sure they reject contaminant contaminated recycling. And play a really hard line with it with the haulers. Well, if your objective is to increase clean recycling, that 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 would be what you want to do. If your if cost comes into the factor and you're a town, anything you don't allow through recycling goes in trash. And that gets paid for either by the town or by the town citizens through a pay as you throw program. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit, just briefly, is the market is in fact changing. There was a time when uh we were able to actually make a few dollars on our recycling. Uh, that market dried up about three or four years ago. China got out of that market in a big way. Uh, and now there are certain recycled materials that there is still a market for. Uh, and it is strengthening in those areas. Certainly, uh, aluminum is still strong. Uh, some other uh scrap metals is strong. There is absolutely no market for glass. Uh, plastics is becoming more difficult. Uh, and while I'm talking about uh the the state's point of view as a stakeholder. I know that you had a conversation a while back about, hey, is, you know, there's some, there's some people talking right now about. You know, is recycling even a good idea? Uh, you know, recycling plastics, uh, should should, you know, is that the right objective for us? And while that's a a good discussion to have and should be had at the state or federal level. You certainly don't want to be out in front of that as a town. Because if you make a decision that you don't want to recycle or uh your recycling efforts are going to be more restrictive than the average uh town. What will happen is you drive up your your trash and you drive down your recycling. Uh, because the the state is still not going to allow you to recycle stuff that they believe is recyclable. Even if there's no market for it. Uh, and we'll talk about that in slightly more detail as 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 we go on. Um, one of the things we've done is we've joined a group, uh, Bill. Uh, Bill Bernard and I are part of a a West of four ninety-five group. Uh, that is uh various towns that are in the process. Uh, I guess everybody's always in the process, but are near to uh renegotiating their hauler contracts. And this group shares data and works with each other to help, uh, and we have support from the state. Um, that lets us uh uh find out what the other towns doing, have some contacts, be able to talk. Uh, to those towns, uh, and to even look at some of their uh suggested boilerplate. For their contracts with various haulers. And I have data on each of those towns, if anybody's curious, uh, number of residents, uh, whether they use ca- uh. Carts or bags. Uh, one of the interesting things is that Gardner and Shirley and Ethel. Uh, only do recycling every other week. And uh, I would, you know, I I can see, I can see some benefits to that, but it would probably drive our residents crazy. Because they can't keep track uh now of, you know, what day, what day of the week we're doing. If we do, if we do it every other. Every other week, we're going to have a real uh concern about, is this the right day to put out my recycling or or is it not? Um, but I I am continuing to work with these other towns. We're 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 learning things about them. Uh, we are the only town that uses Harvey at the moment. Um, most of the, there's some consolidation going on in the in the industry. And uh, when I look down the list, the the major players seem to be Republic. Uh, there's a couple of Casella still left, and there's a few Shaw's. Uh, but we are the only town that uses Harvey. Harvey was recently purchased uh by Waste Connections. And um, I believe in to be a very good organization, and we'll talk about that in a second. Okay, slide number twelve. Uh, if you look at it from the hauler's point of view, you know, as a stakeholder. Um, certainly they have some objectives. They certainly want to consolidate. Uh, I'm sorry, they they have consolidated the waste hauling industry. I mentioned they're part of uh Waste Connections. Uh, and they're concerned with the recycling side because they have to find a market for that. Uh, they charge us for trash, uh, they haul trash out of the state. Uh, but recycling is kind of their business. They they have to uh separate it and find a market for it. Or it becomes trash. Anything that doesn't really qualify or is too contaminated becomes trash. The recycling fees. But we began with them at a at a hundred and five dollars a ton. I know we're talking about trash in this presentation. Uh, but just from a point of view, why we care so much about the quality of of separating trash recycling and having recycling be clean. Is that the recycling fees could go as high as two hundred and twenty dollars per ton if it's considered contaminated. And ours isn't. Right now, we have uh based on our last audit, we have a pretty clean. Recycling uh uh program. Of course, from the hauler's point of view, they would love to see us go to all automated trucks. Uh, the technology is available for them to have trucks with one driver. Yeah, if 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 all the residents have barrels, uh, toters. Uh, that the driver doesn't even have to get out of the truck. The the arm comes down, flips the barrel into either the trash or recycling chute. Uh, and from their point of view, it's less injury, it's faster, and it provides more complete service. Um, they also have a concern when we switched over from Casella to Harvey. Uh, one of the things that they kind of missed in the negotiation process is we have a couple of private roads. Uh, that don't get uh made or usually don't get maintained by the town in terms of snow plowing and clearing out. Uh, those private roads were in our Casella contract. Uh, they transferred over or or grandfathered into our Harvey contract. And they got a kind of a fairly big surprise when they tried to take their gigantic trucks down some of these private roads. So when it comes time to renegotiate, I'm I'm sure that's going to be an issue that uh they're going to want to talk to us about. And there are, there are some fixes. Some of the private roads have uh, the residents have banded together and they. And they did, in fact, on their own, buy uh uh carts and toters, and they. As a as a community, bring them up to the end of the road, and then the hauler picks them up at the end of the road. Where we don't have that solution on all roads, and it's something we're we're continuing to. Uh, I won't say negotiate, but we're continuing to discuss between the DPW and the hauler. Uh, and I think that that one of our best objectives is kind of unlike uh being uh. You know, playing hardball, I think it would be in our best interest to engage in shared goals. Uh, as we discuss our contract with Harvey uh or with any potential vendor going into the uh. June two thousand twenty-four contract. Uh, I'd like to remind you that Harvey was the only company that bid on our contract. Uh, when we put it out after Casella said they didn't, they didn't want to continue with us. Uh, the next stakeholder is the town departments. Uh, I want to give a shout out to uh the DPW, Bill Bill's group, particularly Samantha Tucker and his. Uh, on his team, uh, and Karen Brochu and her team, uh, they do an excellent job uh of uh. Auditing Harvey invoices, auditing Way Zero, uh, information Way Zero is our bag vendor. Uh, they keep the uh, Sam Tucker keeps uh missed pickup and complaint logs. Uh, the audit, uh, uh, they help auditing uh the recycling for uh contamination content. We haven't done that since uh the end of our Casella contract. Uh, and we do excellent financial tracking and follow up uh by both DPW and uh the finance department. If I have, if I have something that doesn't make any sense, they help me understand it. And that that lets me go have a conversation with Harvey to to kind of get it fixed. Um, in terms of outreach activities, I want to spend the most time on social media. Uh, you know, the town has a uh a website and a and a Facebook page. Uh, right now, it's 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 all outbound. It's kind of push based. We we put out announcements. Uh, and those that uh relate to trash and recycling usually have to do with uh holiday schedules or weather. Changes, or if there was a a breakdown from Harvey to communicate that. Uh, there has been some interest in a kind of a interactive uh ability for somebody to ask questions there. I know that opens a. Uh, that opens a hornet's nest in terms of, you know, letting that become a uh. A a site where people get a chance to go dump their bucket. Uh, so I'm not sure that's a great idea, but it, you know, we could in fact talk about it. Uh, so I'm not sure that's a great idea, but it, you know, we could in fact talk about at least an interactive possibility. I know we had, today we put out a notice that said uh we weren't going to collect today. And the first question was, well, does that mean we push the whole week or we just, uh, we're just going to make it all up tomorrow? So we had to put another one out. Um, there are additional Facebook pages like uh Wunenburg Mass on uh Uncensored, Wunenburg Loop, Wunenburg Independent. Uh, Wunenburg Rants and Raves. Uh, I try to keep a a pulse on them. I don't jump into the fray. Uh, I try to correct misconceptions or get information to them before we go too far down a. Uh, uh, an erroneous path. Uh, the state has multiple resources through social media. Uh, Mass Recycles uh is a great website. That kind of talks about uh all the different uh programs the state has. Uh, we also participate in uh in hazardous waste a couple of times a year at Devon's and that's publicized on the web. There's a fantastic day that uh that runs once a year where people actually bring their recyclables to uh to various. You know, they set up a fair. Uh, this this year it ran in Shirley. Actually, the last couple of years it's been running Shirley. There's no reason why we couldn't do one. We participate in the Shirley one. Uh, where where people bring reusable recyclables and 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 various charities are there to to kind of pick them up. And it it's kind of a win-win uh for everybody. And uh, we also run some of the state programming on the pa- on the uh public access channel. They have, they have programming and uh uh public access picks picks that up as part of their uh kind of general programming. Uh, other outreach possibilities, slide fifteen, just kind of talks to what we could do. We uh, we could in fact uh do more on public access. I did uh create a five-minute program explaining our waste and recycling program that runs every so often. Uh, we do run regular messages on the scroll that's up, uh, you know, between programming. Uh, we could and should get involved with the Wunenburg Adult Activity Center. Uh, we I'd be happy to get involved with special events over there or uh if there are any giveaways. Or or anything over uh for the Eagle House. Uh, there's been talk about special pricing. Um, uh, for for seniors, it's certainly something we could talk about. Um, and a hotline. Other possible outreach opportunities um on slide sixteen are through the schools. Uh, or through the library. Uh, and there's there's plenty of material out there and I'm certainly available to help with that. Uh, the bottom line answer, and uh I'll take any questions you have, is if you have any questions or any problems or it's not working, call me. Uh, slide seventeen has my number. It's up on uh, it's up on the uh. Uh, the various Facebook pages. I believe it's on the town website. Uh, I welcome people's calls. I had a uh woman call me yesterday who just moved into town, just wanted to know what the drill was. And uh, while I was happy to answer all the questions, I also had an opportunity to direct her uh to the websites and the Facebook pages, et cetera. So, anyway, that's my story and uh I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And hopefully that cleared up some of your concerns.
All right. Well, thank you first, Mr. Uh, Mr. Toll. That very thorough presentation uh is always really helpful. Uh, that was a lot of really good information. Uh, before I get into my comments, I want to open it up to the members of the select board, starting with selectwoman. Sroka for any comments or questions.
Um, I do have a quick question or two for Mr. Toll. In regards to, um, he said something about Townsend being in the same thing, in the same category as uh we are with. Um, pay as you throw, kind of. Um, he said that the town provided them with two bags. And that they paid three dollars and fifty cents for per bag of overflow. Um, I was just wondering how that uh, how the town pays for that in Townsend? And if that is something that we have ever considered? And do they do recycling as well? And then also, yeah, oh yeah, where are you? I can't see you. Okay.
Yes, they do recycling. In fact, they kind of do their, a lot of their own recycling. They have a transfer station in Townsend. So they, and they actually are our kind of emergency state partner in terms of. You know, uh, we we tend to deal through Harvey because that's the best way for us to do business. But if we, if we had issues where we needed some recycling help or we needed to drop off uh uh material, et cetera. We can work with Townsend and the state uh through through an agreement that we have with the uh, with the regional people in the state. We use Townsend for the recycling site. I don't know exactly how the bag thing works, but I think you can just put any kind of bag you want out. But if you put more than two, you have to use a special one. And that's, all right. Uh, and 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 that's kind of the one thing I wanted to say about us is that, you know, people talk about, you know. Stickers and bags and everything else, just, just from doing this and and dealing with various different residents. Most people use regular white trash bags and then they put a couple of them into a yellow bag. You know, you can, you can fit three of them in a large bag and they, you know, they either, they don't do that till trash day or they do it. You know, in the in the shed and then drag it out to the street on trash day. So people are really using any bag they get and we just haven't put it in a bag, which might be easier than stickers. Uh, certainly if somebody wants to debate is stickers better than bags, we could have that discussion. But the 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 purpose really and the and the and the 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 uh, the two things that drive this. And the two points I really, really want to make is that uh, if you have to pay. For whatever vehicle you throw your trash away with, you're going to think long and hard about what's trash and what's recyclable. And that's what allows us to keep the amount of trash relatively low. Uh, the only towns that beat us are the ones where you not only have to pay for your bags, you have to bring them to the dump yourself. Um, so that's one thing. The other is that studies have shown, and one of the things that Shirley worries about, and it it has. Uh, shown to be true, is if you give a big sixty-five gallon, uh, a sixty-five, uh, yeah, gallon. Uh, uh, barrel for trash, people will fill it up. So you have to charge enough to cover the hauling fees for sixty-five gallons worth as opposed to a thirty gallon that we get in a, in a large trash bag. So it's it's it, you know, you have to, and it's it's an easy math exercise, but you end up passing more cost to the, to the citizen.
Okay, the other question I had was um the automatic barrel. Um, trucks that you were talking about that they wanted so they could have one guy on in the barrel. Um, we use barrels just because we put our bags in barrels because we have a really long driveway. Um, and they've already broken our recycling barrel, so uh when they use the, like, to. I'm not sure if they use that or they just toss the barrel and, you know, when when they use, well, when they use the lift. Um, are people going to have their barrels trashed? Like, the top is totally broken off now of the recycling.
Okay, yeah, one, I've had that, I've had, I've had that conversation with with the hauler and they're very, very reasonable. Now, you know, obviously they're pushing, you know, in all honesty, they're pushing their heavy-duty barrels that they would provide. And, you know, and and that's that. Uh, and obviously if we were to use Harvey's barrels and any of them got broken, they'd replace them for your charge. They'd also replace any barrel that we tell them they broke. But they have come across people who have beat up barrels that they've had for other years and they bought very cheaply. And they're not very good barrels. I mean, I'm just calling it like it is. And they're really not meant to be used for an automatic. Uh, you know, uh, lift on the side of a truck. But if you have a quality, uh, if you, if you've gone to the, to the uh expense of getting a quality barrel. I actually recommend that you use some kind of barrel to put your yellow bags in because that helps us when we're a day late. Because of weather or whatever and the critters don't get at it.
Oh, yeah.
They will, they will in fact lift the cover up and and if it's full of yellow bags, they'll take them all. And if they broke it, they'll replace it. That's, that's where you need to call me. But just to be fair, you know, it's got to be relatively quality barrel to start with. I'm not saying you, Heather, I'm not saying you guys aren't.
No, no, I know what you're saying. I do. I know what you're saying. Okay. And then I just wanted to point out that I really love the idea that you brought up the Shirley uh recycling thing. Because I've gone there several times. I actually brought it up in a previous meeting and said, I would love to see us do one of those recycling things. Where people could bring in their bikes and all the old stuff that they have in their attics instead of buying a dumpster. And renting a dumpster, you, having an event like that, it is really, I I think, I would love to see it in Wunenburg.
It's it's an incredible amount of work. Uh, I was on the team that helped do the Shirley one. Uh, it's about fifteen to twenty people, about three weeks worth of work for that one day. And I would love to see us do it as well. But you got to get, you got to get that kind of community interest, you know, drummed up. And it, I think it's, it's an excellent event. It makes everybody feel good because it's, it's something you want to get rid of and you get rid of it for nothing. And it's some, somebody else wants and it makes them happy as well.
Right. This would be positive, really nice um thing to do in town. So I hope you can get that going.
All right, thank you. Thank you, uh, Selectwoman Sroka, uh, Selectman Dwyer.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank uh Mr. Toll for uh the presentation. I thought it was excellent. Um, I really appreciate the fact that he he put all the um information in in outlets. That we can get information regarding trash pickup. Uh, I I had a a time over uh, uh, the holidays where I I was steaming mad. Because the trash didn't come and turned out I put it out on the wrong day because I wasn't smart enough to go to one of those outlets and read. Uh, uh, the proper pickup schedule. Uh, so I appreciate that and I I think that information is very, very useful to uh the town. And for people who don't read things completely like me.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Um, Mr. Franco?
Yes, first I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Toll for the presentation and uh, just as an editorial comment, those little model trash barrels that you held up before, they were adorable. Uh, the um, uh, if it, I I may not completely understand the sticker program. But uh, and and so maybe you can explain, but I, one question that comes to mind, and this could be from my not understanding it. Is if, for example, we went to a sticker model and you put, the intent is to put the stickers on bags. How do you regulate the size of the bags people use? I mean, how you stop somebody from putting out a fifty-gallon hefty thing? With a sticker on it?
That's, that's, that's one of the problems. Uh, you know, what, you you probably say you can't have more than a thirty-pound bag. Because that's what we say now. Uh, and then, you know, it's it's really kind of up to the hauler. That, you know, let me give you an anecdotal, it's true, but it's, let me give you an anecdotal response. Uh, I got a call from the hauler and they said, hey, you know, I think somebody's trying to pull a fast one on us. When we go pick up their trash, we open the cover and the first two bags are yellow. And then down the bottom, there's three or four white bags. What do you want me to do about it? And I took a ride over there and I took a look and for the three or four days, you know, we go over three weeks. For the three or four times I went, I did not notice that being the case. So I checked back with the hauler. He said, no, they, I guess they stopped doing it. Well, maybe they noticed I was there. Maybe they ran out of bags and faked it, you know, for the one day he, he caught it. I mean, no system is perfect, but you're right in 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 assuming the idea is you got to buy a sticker instead of a bag. You got to put a sticker on each bag that you use. Uh, you can't put three bags into one bag like you can now, so you'd have to buy three stickers. Obviously, they'd be priced somewhat differently. Uh, it just seems like an awful lot of administrative work that doesn't really change much. It still pay as you throw and it's still kind of regulated at the curb.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, so James, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, so the first is on senior bags. So it was one of the things that I had really pushed for uh when we were last negotiating our bag contract. Was, you know, understanding that there are, you know, many members of the community who, you know, with the, with the rising cost of everything. That they're going up at that rate. Um, so my comment is, you know, it would be great if if, you know, we can work with you. And and Heather, the town manager, um, as we kind of, I believe the bag contract is up for renewal this year. And then as we, is that right, Heather? Is it next year?
We have one more year.
Okay.
For the bag contract or the hauler?
The bag contract.
That I would have to verify, but the hauler is next June.
Okay, so as as we look into the bag contracts, I thought we were on an off cycle with those, but uh my memory could be wrong. My point is, it would be great if we can kind of build into the pay as you throws program. Uh, a way for the senior center to be able to provide seniors, um, people who go to the Adult Activity Center. Provide them with, you know, uh, small, you know, ten trash bags a year or something. That will help um minimize their their costs. Because right now this is not covered by the taxes. Uh, this is a fully, you know, fully kind of outside of what is technically covered by the taxes. But you know what I'm saying? Uh, that that, it's a program that's kind of outside of our general um tax structure. Um, and so it's not part of our overall budget, that it's a separate program that we run. So that would be great if we can kind of build that in, so that I offer that as a comment. And I see that Bill is still with us, so I'm going to make another kind of two comments together. You know, one of the, you know, something I've mentioned to the school committee, uh, and I know I've said this since I've been in elected office. Is that, you know, one of our uh challenges is is finding a way to bring the youth in our community. Um, into the fold of kind of our community. And and I do think that we have missed a couple of opportunities in the past, but there's always, you know, tomorrow's a a new day. And an opportunity for us to do things differently. And so what I would encourage is that, you know, as you go into this year and and others, that we kind of look at, um, you know, uh, our high school population. And create opportunities for them to get engaged. It seems that a lot of the younger, um, you know, people these days especially. Are really trying to looking for ways to get involved in their, in their community and part of the civics education curriculum now. Requires some kind of student projects. And maybe there may be a way to kind of help organize one of those cleanups that Selectwoman Sroka was talking about. You know, knowing that it's going to need fifteen, fifteen people or more to kind of organize. That that may be a good opportunity to present to the student body population, uh, and there may be takers on that. And the the second thing I just wanted to note was uh us doing some kind of earthdate cleanup. You know, I've mentioned this every year that I go down, and I live at the bottom of Mass Ave uh from the, from the high school. So all that trash kind of rolls downhill, um, you know, and really it accumulates when it's windy. Um, outside and when there are trash delays. I haven't had many issues with trash, but I'm going to pick up on a Monday that may have something to do with it. That I don't know. Um, but but, you know, what I noticed is that the amount of trash that we're picking up every spring is just more and more and more. Um, and you know, good, some of the programs, and I know that we will be having this discussion as part of our environmental policy. So perhaps we should talk more about this offline, uh, but looking into programs across the state that work well. That that it seems that the, the, the programs that work well are when we kind of take a map of the town. And allow people to sign up for certain sections, uh, and and then kind of be responsible for those cleanups. That that kind of gives people a certain level of engagement, uh, accountability. And and then it also lets them focus on a more limited area. That if we can kind of formulate some kind of way to assist that and into kind of a cleanup program. And then also provide those bags or provide the way to dispose of those. I think that that would certainly help continue, you know, promoting the recycling and and the trash. Um, at, you know, cleanups that we have, but also helping our roadsides look a bit better. Uh, which also affects our stormwater systems and also the local wildlife. So I know those were comments, not really questions, um, but otherwise I think the presentation, uh, Mr. Toll, that you provided really informative. Uh, tonight, I think this was really helpful for all the residents in attendance to see just the amount of uh energy and 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 attention. And and good thought that has been going into making sure that this program's successful uh for all the people in our community. So thank you, Mr. Toll.
Okay.
Do you have any final, final kind of parting words for us before we continue down the agenda here?
Not at all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Toll, and and to Ms. Ms. Lamu, our town manager. Any final comments or questions?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Toll as well for taking this opportunity to update the public and the board on this important topic. It's, it's obviously uh, always a hot topic on social media, um, and something we want to uh keep our residents apprised of. And um, also highlight the good work that's being done.
All right. Thank you again. Thank you again, Mr. Toll, and uh, thank you, Heather. All right, so we're going to continue with the agenda, um, and we are going to, I know that we are running a little late on our appointments here this evening. So, uh, we do have Kathy Beal, I know, on standby. So to the town manager, if we can go to our interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations, and if we can take, uh, Kathy Beal. Uh, and then, uh, move on to the ratification, the IT, uh, admin. Okay, so Kathy, you're with us. Excellent. Good to see you today.
See you too.
All right, so you've submitted a request to be a member of the Council of Aging, uh, which is really exciting. And so I just wanted to give you the opportunity here today, um, to, you know, express your interest in the role. Um, and you'll give the opportunity for any members to ask any comment, ask any questions or provide any comments.
Um, I think a lot of people know my mother, who's ninety-one, lives with me. And the elderly is, uh, it's very important to me, you know, to to do good things for the elderly. And Jane Rabbit invited me to join, so it sounded like a good idea.
All right, um, you know, thi- this is pretty straightforward, but I I just want to go to through the members of the select board with any comments or question that anyone has. Um, Heather, it looks like she's okay. Um, uh, that would be select woman's Roca seems to, uh, be good. Anything from you, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Franco? Okay, yeah, we're good to go here. So this is a really straightforward, Ms. Bill. Thank you for hanging on with us this late into the evening. So I, uh, do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Beal? And I I just want to confirm the term here real quick. Um, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint, uh, Kathy Beal as a member of the Council on Aging. Uh, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
All right. Yep, there's a motion and a second. And Kathy, I didn't say this, but, um, you know, I just want to note that you live at Twelve Horizon Island Road.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Th- this is a roll call vote, uh, all in favor, uh, select women's Roca.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Selectman Dwyer.
Aye.
Blackman Franco.
Aye.
And an I for myself. So congratulations, Kathy. Uh, what you want to do is. So what you want to do is you want to do two things. Uh, the first is make sure you go check in with the town clerk. And get sworn in and then, uh, all in that same vein, reach out to, uh, Deb Lincoln or or Jane and kind of just get apprised of the schedule. For the Council of Aging. I also encourage you to go to, uh, the select board's policies and procedures. And we'll have Elaine, uh, send out to you our appointment process. We recently modified it and we now provide some guidance on just some things that will help you be successful in your, uh, in your new role. So thank you for stepping in here.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, and to the town manager, if you would mind introducing, uh, the request to ratify the appointment of IT, uh, administrative assistant.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a new position in the fiscal twenty-three budget. And it's a position we began advertising for in September. And since September, we received eleven applications. Six were invited for interviews and five accepted an interview. The person I appointed is Kara McCarthy. Kara has an associate's degree in liberal arts from Dean College. And her bachelor, bachelors of science and communications media with a concentration in professional communication. Kara has nine years of experience in marketing and design with both experience in implementing. And updating websites, experience with content management and utilizing social media platforms. Her references described her as having a positive attitude, her greatest strength as a good communicator and that she embraces challenges. And having personally interviewed her, I can, um, attest to her positive attitude. I think, um, she'll be fit very well, uh, in the role and is very qualified for the position.
Excellent. Um, do we have any comments or questions to the town manager? I do have some questions, but do we have any comments or questions to the town manager?
No.
Okay. So to to the town manager on this one, so I I do see the the Lux, uh, with your hand raised on this. So to the town manager on on this appointment, you know, my my question to you is, you know, one of the challenges that we have. Is, um, getting our volunteers and elected officials onto Town Email. And walking them through that process, um, also helping them get set up on their devices. I know that, no, especially for people who, um, may be retired. And in their careers do not work with computers in the level that we all work with them now. That it does provide some challenges for some people. So my question is, um, you know, will this new position? Provide kind of help support that that need in town and provide that additional capability.
That's not the role of this position. It was specifically, um, administrative. And, um, working on the website, doing all the updates to the website. Um, we are moving forward with a new website, um, with Civic Plus. So this person will be, uh, pivotal, um, component of that transition to a new website. As well as, um, the processing invoices, all related to IT. That's the other component. The email portion, that's, uh, covered by Suze RT. Uh, they've helped with that whole email migration. If members of boards have particular concerns about email, they can set up, uh, time. Um, or our IT director, who's acting as our IT director through what Suze RT, can go to those meetings to help with that.
Okay, you know, I think we can, we can probably talk more about that, but you know, one thing that's really helpful that I've found. Um, is kind of having on a calendar on like a monthly level, um, you know, kind of when certain workshops may occur. So that way residents can sign up and if no one signs up, then it doesn't happen. Um, but at least kind of having a placeholder for people. I know that we kind of do this really individualized. Um, but, you know, I've recognized in the last month especially, uh, that certain individuals in town do not use Town Email. And it it can be very problematic. Uh, but you you and I talk every day multiple times a day. So we can certainly talk more about that, um, more about that, Heather. So I, um, I do see that we have, uh, select woman, uh, Luck and and, uh, Mr. Carl Luck with a hand up. So select woman Luck.
Um, thank you very much for recognizing me. Um, since, um, Ms. Lamu has become town manager. How many full-time positions and or part-time positions converted to full-time have been added to the town's payroll?
I don't know the answer to that, but I think we can come back to you on that one.
Yeah, I I would really like an answer, yeah, at the next meeting if possible.
Yeah, we can, I think we can get an answer for you for the next.
Thank you.
All right. And, uh, I, you know, I I think, you know, I will offer as a comment, you know, I recognize that we probably need additional staff. Um, you know, but, you know, I'm I'm pretty hesitant to taxes going up. I think, um, Ms. Luck knows. That I'm rather conservative when it comes to how the government spends money. Um, you know, but I I certainly have identified with the volume of, uh, requests we've received in other areas. Um, you know, that that we have a communications need here in town that is currently addressed, uh, by the town manager. But does not work well, uh, when there's, you know, a lot of other load, um, the general load. So, but to this, to this, um, back to this, um, appointment, it sounds like this is going to provide. Great support to the IT department, help us move in that kind of forward direction. It seems to round out, uh, the roles that we have with Suze RT. Um, and, uh, so thank you, Heather, for for this. And, uh, what, how many hours a week is this position?
This is up to nineteen hours a week.
Okay, uh, up to nineteen, then I'm assuming non-benefited as well.
Correct.
All right, um, okay, is there a motion? Uh, would you mind just giving us that name one more time, Heather? I'm sorry.
Kara McCarthy.
Kara McCarthy. Okay. Is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint, uh, Kara McCarthy to position of. If it's correct, the IT, uh, assistant.
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
All right, is there a second? I will second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, there's a roll call vote, select women's Roca.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Dwyer.
Hi.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And an I for myself. Um, so great, Heather, and when do we expect this person to start? You're going to tell me tomorrow?
Thursday. That was pending tonight.
All right, that's good to hear. Okay, so we're going to go into the town manager report. Followed by a presentation of the proposed senior tax relief. Um, I do need to step away. So if I'm not back in the next couple of minutes, um, uh, Mr. Franco will, uh, step into the role as chair. Uh, just for those couple of minutes, I don't know why. Thank you. So to the town manager, we have a town manager report today.
Yes, it's, um. It's short. So I'll start with the announcement of existing vacancies. There are five vacancies on the three-hundredth anniversary committee, two vacancies on the agricultural commission. One vacancy on the Council on Aging, one vacancy on the Finance Committee. One associate vacancy for the Green Communities Committee, two vacancies for Historical Commission. One member-at-large vacancy for Open Space Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee. And one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can find the voluntary applications on the town website, complete the forms and return them to the select board's office. If you have any questions on these opportunities and the roles and responsibilities, you can contact the, our office at nine seven eight. Five eight two four one three zero, extension one four four. With current employment opportunities for the town, the following are open, the open positions. Administrative assistant for the Police Department, which is a sixteen hours a week position. Assistant Town Accountant, which recently, uh, became vacant at thirty-two hours a week. Digital Services Staff Librarian, which is twenty hours a week, Heavy Equipment Operator, which is forty hours a week. Library Assistant, nineteen hours a week, Tax Collector Principal Clerk, which is thirty-six hours a week. Production Technician, which is twenty hours a week, Recreation Director, which is nineteen hours a week. Seasonal Lifeguards, which are seasonal, so the hours vary, Beach Director, also seasonal. And Videographer, which is two to ten hours a week. More information on each of these positions can be found on our town website under Employment Opportunities. And the, uh, the information is in those job postings. An update on the invitation for bids that were out recently. The Thirty School Street Hazardous Materials Demolition Bids were due February sixteenth, and we received five bids. The low bid was from Costello Dismantling Company of Wareham in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. And the high bid was for three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Costello was determined to be the lowest, most responsible responsive bidder and will be awarded the bid. So we were happy to see that, um, that com- competitive bids were submitted. And, uh, that was, uh, well under our budget. The Town Hall Building Envelope Project bids were due February twenty-third. And unfortunately, we received only one bid in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Plus, uh, the alternate cost for replacement of the two chimneys for forty-three thousand. This far exceeded our appropriation of seventy-five thousand. So we will have to, um. Work with the Facilities Director and determine next steps for the work that was, um, identified in this bid. For meetings, events and other announcements, the annual town meeting warrant is open for submission of articles until March twentieth at four P M. And articles must be submitted to the select board's office in writing. The Citizens Party Caucus is Monday, March twenty-seventh at seven P M in the middle school, high school auditorium. The annual town meeting is Saturday, May sixth at nine A M, the the middle school, high school auditorium. And the annual town election is Saturday, May twentieth at seven eight, from seven A M to five P M at the TC Passios.
All right, uh, thank you to the town manager for that report. All right, so, you know, one of the thing, one of the goals of the select board, uh, for the last several years. Actually, before we get into this, you know, we do have caucus coming up here soon, and we also have remaining open vacancies. You know, I encourage everyone at home who's hearing us, you know. Obviously, a lot has been happening in our community in the last couple of months, uh, last two months. You know, I hope, I hope that all of us can identify within ourselves ways that we can give back to our community, ways, you know, the skills that we offer. And, uh, you know, our community depends upon all of us coming together for the public good. And so if you can kind of look through your own skill sets, look at some of the vacancies we have, look at some of the positions that are coming up. For elected office and kind of identify ways that you can contribute, uh, to the community. Um, you know, we, we know that some people are involved in their church communities and that that, you know, that's their primary focus. Or they have other nonprofit organizations that they're focused in as well. We certainly don't want to overextend anyone. Uh, but if you have the time and the opportunity and the skills, um, certainly, you know, if you're able to step forward, that would be greatly, greatly appreciated. To help us all continue to work together for the betterment of our community. So with that said, um, one of the, one of the goals of the select board is understanding. And this is something that all of us have said in in one way, is that, um, taxes have a disproportionate effect on seniors. Um, gentrification is a real thing. Um, and and one of the things that we, what we have purpose to try to do is understand. That our community has changed quite a bit over the last twenty years. Um, and we have a lot of people who live in town and have lived in town for thirty, forty years. Who retired in the nineties on a middle-class income, which at that time was fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars. Um, and who are having a difficult time remaining in our community. One of the goals of the select board has been to identify a way to, uh, come up with some senior tax relief. And to have that built into our localized structure. So Lou, uh, and, uh, Selectman Franco, Selectman Alonso have taken point of this discussion. And so Mr. Franco is going to be presenting to us tonight, kind of the overview of what this framework looks like. So, Mr. Mr. Franco.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, Madam Town Manager, are you able to share that PDF on the, uh? Screen, and I'm not sure which one of my mics. I have two mics and two screens. Am I coming through? Okay, I'm not sure which mic is picking me up right now. Okay.
Yeah, you're clear, you're clear a little, very clear.
All right. All right. Thank you. And I can, I can kick off while while that document is coming up, but. Um, so this is the culmination or, you know, a s- a a large step in the direction of. Uh, putting forth, um, or or implementing a senior tax relief program. Uh, which is going to require not just a simple, uh, warrant article that. Uh, gets approved at town meeting. That's not the end of it. Uh, we would be doing this program under our Home Rule Charter, you know, so it would be a Home Rule petition essentially. So the article that we'd be aiming to put on the, uh, warrant for May. Is really to see if the town would approve of or vote to authorize the select board. On behalf of half of the town to petition the legislature. Uh, for passage of special legislation relating to this senior tax relief program. So it's a multi-step process, but leading up to the present. Uh, we had a so- senior tax relief group that was working together, Mr. Alonso and I were on that. We worked with the town manager, Heather Lamu, the, uh, Finance Director Karen Broschu. Uh, uh, CJ Carroll, who did a lot, uh, the principal assessor, who did a lot of modeling, uh. A- and in terms of the different levers we were looking at and what would the impact be? So basically in coming up with criteria, wh- what's our age limit? What is, um, our residency requirement? You know, we didn't, uh, one of the things we don't want to do is. You know, have a really short residency requirement and become like a a haven for, you know, let's, let's retire in Lunenburg where we can give the tax relief. We want, we want to invest in, um, a return, I should say, to and reward those longtime residents that have been here. Who have a need, uh, but have shown commitment to the town. Who have a need, uh, but have shown commitment to the town through longevity of residency and, you know, who just paying taxes. Uh, for for a long period of time. So, uh, we, there were very few models for this around the state. And uh, the town manager was instrumental in identifying the few that exist. Uh, among them were Mendon, Wakefield, I believe Andover was another one. Uh, but it's, you know, we would be, uh, if we were to implement this, I think there would still be fewer than ten towns doing this. So, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, at any point, um, Madam Town Manager. Uh, so, in any event, um, with that. And through meetings of the tax relief group, following those meetings. And having the modeling, the basic models for for different levers. Those models were not perfect by any means, and they were estimates, so there was concern about uncertainty, like. Well, how many people are we gonna be giving relief to? That was never determined with complete certainty, and we had estimates for different age ranges, you know, sixty, what if we did it at sixty-five? What if we did it at seven? What if we did it at fifteen years of residency, about twenty years of residency? So all these different parameters and different levels, and based on those, I don't, I'm not gonna present those numbers. That's not my intent here, I'm sort of giving you what came out the other end of the the meat grinder, so to speak. Uh, so, we, Tom Alonso and I took that, uh, and. Information, we met a few times and consulted several times to arrive at what I'm about to present. Uh, for consideration by the select board, so we would be looking to craft a warrant article. Around these um elements that I'm about to present, you know, this is not the warrant article, this is elements of the warrant article. So, I already stated the purpose, although it's, I wrote it up there too, but I think I covered it verbally. So, the, to be eligible, this is what we've come up with, the applicant must have applied for and been granted. The state's senior circuit tax breaker, uh, tax credit, rather. The, the senior circuit tax break, uh, senior circuit breaker tax credit. Uh, so they would have to go through that process, uh, and. Be granted it for the prior year, now, the first year of implementation, there isn't gonna, um, well, there could be a prior year for people, so. That, I believe that tax credit, uh, it's outside the scope of what we're doing here, but I believe right now that that's a maximum of of twelve hundred dollars presently. At least of two thousand twenty-two, that's what it was. Second requirement, each applicant named in an application who has attained, and I'll have to do some explaining here, who has attained. The eligibility age of seventy years for an elderly exemption in Lunenburg. Under M G L, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause forty-one C. Must have applied for and been granted this exemption, which I believe is seven hundred dollars, it's the last number I remember working with when I was on the assessors. So, this needs some explanation and why it's not in conflict with a later provision. Uh, I will come uh back to provision number two, when I, when I get to provision number three. Each applicant named in an application must have attained the age of sixty-five years by the close of the calendar year immediately preceding the year of application. Now, this is under the senior tax relief program, so, so uh, Mr. Alonso and I recognize that there was a conflict here, and Mr. Uh. CJ Carroll had brought this up in the past as well, that there's a conflict, an apparent conflict here. Uh, we in Lunenburg have chosen the eligibility age of seventy for purposes of a uh, an elderly exemption. But we're looking to do sixty-five for the senior tax relief. So, how could we uh require, I mean, if we require people to apply for and receive the yellow eligibility, uh, the elderly exemption. Then by default, this program wouldn't kick in until you're seventy anyway, so the way we deal with, dealt with that, or we're proposing to do that. Mr. Alonso and I are proposing, is that if a person, if an applicant for the senior tax relief. Has reached the eligibility age of seventy for a senior, an elderly exemption. They must apply for and receive it, however, somebody who has not attained that age, somebody sixty-eight. Can still apply for the senior tax relief program, well, obviously without qualifying for the, for the um, the uh. Elderly exemption, so that's the way we saw we could reconcile this immediately with a, with a, an eligibility age of sixty-five. For the uh senior tax relief, without having to go through, uh, and we don't even know that we want to go through. Uh, amending down the senior, the elderly exemption to sixty-five. So, I hope that's clear, uh, and if there are any questions at the end of these criteria, uh, please ask them then. So, four, the applicant must have owned and occupied a home in the town of Lunenburg. As his or her primary residence for at least fifteen consecutive years. Pre-gating and including the date of application, so we settled on fifteen, we're proposing fifteen instead of twenty. Uh, and also. Both, uh, we are not, we're not saying that it has to be the same residence, you have to have owned and occupied a home as a principal residence. So you might have moved from one home to the other, but you had a, you know, a chain of ownership in in town for fifteen consecutive years. The applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Lunenburg Board of Assessors that he or she. And each co-applicant owns no other significant assets, such as by way of non-limiting example. A second home, a trust fund, securities, equities, bonds, et cetera, so it, it's like other programs. In that it looks to, it will scrutinize whether there are significant other assets that. Should render, should basically negate uh a claim of need. The applicant, six, the applicant must submit a timely application with the Board of Assessors, I need to check on the appropriate window here. But many towns are on the si- on a similar schedule uh for for their whole cyclical um, uh assessments and all that, so. Uh, Wakefield defines this as August first to September thirtieth, I need to check and see if that actually works for for Lunenburg. So that's, that's a question I have, uh, the applicant, seven, the applicant must submit an application. And demonstrate eligibility for each year for which property tax relief is sought. So once it's sought and granted, it doesn't just carry on in perpetuity automatically, it has to be constantly reestablished. Eight, the amount of relief, now, this is where we include this for a very specific reason. This is an individual uh on the amount of relief that would be granted to any particular applicant. So there's gonna be an individual limit, and then there's going to be a cap on the entire size of the fund. That'll come up subsequently, but as far as an individual limit. The amount of relief granted to each applicant under this program shall not exceed one hundred percent. Of the circuit breaker tax credit, for which the applicant qualified in the previous year. Now, there was one town, I believe it was Mendon, that said no less than fifty percent and were no greater than two hundred percent. We are proposing, Tom and I are, that is, Mr. Alonso and I are proposing that it be one hundred percent of the circuit break, just a one for one. Another town had done that, uh, I think that might have been Wakefield that had had that model. All right, so now, how do we control? The sort of size of this fund, I mean, you know, if 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 we just get an insane number of requests. How do we make sure that that gets covered and and uh that the requests? Um, you know, that we can actually cover them and and grant the relief? So, the model that we've come up with is tying to, or that we're proposing, is tying the re-total size of the fund. To a percentage of the levy. So, of course, any relief granted under the program is gonna result in a reduction of property tax to uh those applicants to whom relief is granted. But the resulting reduction in revenue collected must be compensated or elsewhere. It is not envisioned that these funds will be drawn from the overlay. Rather, the total dollar value of relief granted under this program will be spread among all remaining taxpayers. So, uh, in arriving at the eligibility parameters, um, so, so that's gonna get spread out, so. Uh, and then in modeling this, for example, I'm just remembering one set of scenarios. Well, no, let me get to the size of the fund first. Um, but in arriving at the eligibility parameters, the number of eligible persons and associated impacts were modeled and estimated by our principal assessor. Very, very nicely, and also with input from the finance uh director. Accordingly, the final version of a warrant article placed before town meeting may include changes to the eligibility requirements outlined above. For instance, the eligibility age may be raised, and this is subject to discussion by the board. Eligibility age may be raised to seventy years, or the years of residency may be raised from fifteen to twenty, or to some number in between. You know, subject to vote by the select board as to what we want to see put forth on the warrant article, and then, of course. Subject to discussion and amendment at town meeting itself. Uh, in addition to reducing uh fund, uh exposure, funding exposure by adjusting age and residency requirements. Uh, Mr. Alonso and I are suggesting a cap on the total funds available to the relief program. Total in the bucket that's gonna be distributed. So as envisioned, the cap would be tied to the levy, more specifically for the purposes of discussion in the creation of a warrant article. Uh, we're suggesting that total dollar value of relief granted in the aggregate. Not exceed one percent of the real property tax levy. So, for example, if the tax levy is thirty million dollars. We are suggesting that the, this fund not pay out any more than three hundred thousand dollars total. To uh all claimants. So what happens if the total number of requests for relief, the total dollar value of requests. Exceeds the total dollar level, a total dollar value of the fund? So, we are basically calling for or suggesting a proportionate distribution, so. I put up a small sl- uh example here, uh, just to sort of illustrate the point where we have five total applicants and there's five thousand dollars available. Now, before anybody gets crazy on Facebook, uh. We're not suggesting that the fund be five thousand dollars, or that only five people are going to, because people, there will be people out there. That s- suggests that that's what we're suggesting. No, this is a simple example to illustrate the point, there's a five thousand dollar fund. And there are five people applying for it, and I put out applicants A through E. One person asked for a thousand, another fifteen hundred, another person for a thousand, another person's requested eight hundred, and another one for seven hundred. So these represent uh twenty percent, thirty percent, twenty percent, sixteen percent, and fourteen percent respectively. Of the total requests, uh, so requests were five thousand dollars. Oh, I'm trying to scroll down, but I can't, uh, cause I'm, it's not on my screen, thank you. But now, assume that there's only four thousand dollars in the fund, because four thousand dollars represents one percent of the levy. Uh, where we're capping this, what we would, what we're suggesting is that the distributions in relief mirror. Uh, the, so the distributions in actual relief granted mirror the same percentages. Uh, of the uh total aggregate relief requested, so. For example, applicant A uh was twenty percent, applicant B was thirty percent, twenty percent for C, sixteen percent for D, fourteen percent. For E, except that there's only four thousand dollars available, so there each. So that's a twenty percent reduction in the total funds that are available versus the requests, so each applicant's. Relief would be, relief requested be, would be reduced by twenty percent, and so that's how we would suggest spreading the pool out. So, uh, that's the summary, uh, the major elements and. Ready for discussion? I'm not hearing you, Mike.
Yep, uh, thank you, Mr. Franco, for that presentation, I am gonna open it to the board for questions, I just, I just wanna start though by providing some. Clarification from anyone watching who wants to know what the senior tax, uh, senior circuit tax breaker is. Um, so it's a credit that's issued by the Commonwealth to people who are above the age of sixty-five or older. And it's based on income, um, and also other factors, so certainly you wanna look into it, but generally, if you're a single person above sixty-five. Um, if your income is below, and I'm looking at numbers for two thousand twenty-two. If your income was below sixty-four thousand dollars, you would qualify. If you are a head of household, um, that your income would need to be below eighty thousand dollars. And if you are married, filing jointly, um, your income would need to be uh below ninety-six thousand dollars. Also, it is tied to the value of one's property. Um, and that your uh assessed value cannot exceed nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So the intent is that most seniors could find themselves, many seniors uh could find themselves eligible. For that senior circuit tax breaker, which then um is one of the prongs that Mr. uh Franco mentioned as eligibility for this. But uh, I just wanted to give that clarity, and I wanna go to the members for any questions, uh, Mr. Franco, you wanna clarify something further?
I do, I just wanna make sure that because the town manager was involved in this, in what led up to this. And then, Mr. Alonso and I took it upon ourselves, because we're under a short runway, to try to get a warrant article on. I would like her to, I I welcome and um, any see, any uh, uh, points that she wishes to raise or clarifications or. Why things might not work, or any, and just any thoughts she has on this whole thing before we're done commenting on.
Um, I have, I need a little more time to digest the proportion, um. That you've suggested on the latter part of the proposal, but all the criteria points are. Are aligned with what I, you know, recall from our meetings, um, when we talked about previous examples from other communities. So, thank you.
Yes, and I just, I, and 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 just, I think I, just so I can circle back and and just make this point clear is that. The tie-in to the levy and a percentage of the levy, and who knows, maybe town meeting says it shouldn't be one percentage, it should be three quarters of the percentage or something. That's a way of, hey, we have uncertainty, we just don't know how many people are gonna apply for this thing and what the total amount of the request is gonna be. So we need a way of like creating predictability and not having a ton of exposure that we're not ready for, so. With that, I felt comfortable, we felt comfortable putting this forth and just with that kind of a cap in there, you just know it's never gonna be worse than. One percent of the levy, so.
Yep, that makes logical sense.
All right, uh, select woman Sroka.
Uh, the only question I, I just wanted to clarify that this will be a warrant article at the town meeting, that the people will be voting on.
That is cool, that is our goal, that between now and March fourteenth, really, because. That's our last select board meeting before the warrant closes, unfortunately, it closes like one day short of when we would be having another meeting. Actually, it closes at four o'clock, so that meeting wouldn't matter anyway, it'd be nice if it closed on the twenty-second, because. Um, uh, so, yeah, by March, so basically after this discussion tonight. My thinking is that if the select board approves. And gives sort of the blessing, um, to now actually start writing the language of a warrant article to appear on the warrant. And run that, visit it again next week, and then visit it and vote on it by the fourteenth.
Okay. That's all.
All right, um, Selectman Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I wanna thank uh. Mr. Franco for his work on this, uh, I think this is a, uh, an excellent start. Um, and I think uh the way it's been presented, it it represents a, a uh modest credit for uh seniors. That uh, I I think the residents can get behind and uh. I I fully support this going forward.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Dwyer, you know, uh, my only comment, uh, so also not only comment. You know, I know this has been a work in progress for a while, um, you know, the senior circuit tax break, I think, I think as we were discussing previous iterations. You know, my concern has been not only for uh the people who are um. Um. On the lower end of the socioeconomic spectrum, um, but also for the people who are, you know, middle class. Who are just living in their homes. Who are just living in their homes and have been living here for a while and having a program that. Could capture them, and I think that the income thresholds here uh would help capture them, so that's a good thing. The only thing that I would add is I would like to see an additional restriction and maybe I missed it, uh, Mr. Franco. Um, that uh eligibility should not include anyone who has a non-dependent adult living with them. Um, that I think that although you may have, and and that would be something that would be my concern. Um, which is that, you know, we want to be able to provide a benefit to seniors, and I think the assumption is senior-only households. Um, but you know, wh- what are your thoughts on those households that not so much about the children, you know, the the people who are helping raise their grandkids? But the people who maybe have a, you know, forty-year-old or thirty-year-old um kid living with them or someone else for that matter. Who is working a full-time job and who is not a senior, um, you know, how do we handle household members? Who are non-dependents um and who are adults?
I register the point and I appreciate it. I don't have a snap answer to that at the moment, but does. Now, town manager, you have any suggestions on how to maybe deal with that or the other select board members? Or you, Mr. Jefferson?
Can you repeat that again, Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah, so the question is about um the seniors who have non-dependent adults living with them. And uh and how are, how would they be treated by this?
So they would qualify as the owners of the property. But with um dependents living with them, I think they would still qualify and.
So people not dependent, like I, you know, if you have a child who maybe is a. Uh, needs additional adult services, you know, you you can have a dependent child, but I I what I'm trying to say is what happens when you have the non-dependent children. Uh, living with you. Heather Soroka looks like she wants to.
I know what you're trying, you're trying, he's trying to just the kids that go to college. And then move back home. And have full-time jobs and still live with their parents. And some of them may be sixty-five and older and qualify, correct, Michael Ray? But they have an adult who lives there who works full-time. And just decided to save money and live at home with his parents or her parents. That's what you're talk, you're talking about, right?
Yeah, or. Correct, or or the people who are, you know, renting rooms in their homes and. Um, have other people, non-family members living with them, that are, you know, are we looking at household makeup? I I guess is really the underlying question and our, you know. That would be my contribution is that my opinion is I think that we should, I'm asking the question, but let me offer the opinion. The opinion is I think that we should look at household makeup. Um, that, you know, if the goal is, if there's a cap in the fund. And if that cap is, you know, let's say it's one percent, that the goal then should be to make sure that the benefit is going to the people who need it the most. And I would draw a distinction between a household that is senior-only. Uh, I would lump in senior-only households with grandkids in the same household. But a a household where the home is owned by a senior, but there are people living in the home who are not seniors and who are not dependents. Um, that I would expect that those households would be ineligible. Or or that there would be additional criteria to identify eligibility.
That's fair enough, uh, I I do you think that that represents a substantial percentage of?
No.
Okay. So let me address it this way, uh, one of the concerns that all of us had in this working group is. How to like. We know that some people are going to sneak through and abuse it, they're they're going to sneak through and they're going to. Get it and maybe they don't really have the full meat, so. You have to, with, the whole idea was to try to minimize those occurrences. While making sure that the net is cast broad enough that you're actually getting relief to. All the people that need it and qualify for it. So, um, you know. If we don't think that that, I mean, yes, maybe we drill down on that, maybe, maybe the, maybe the uh program specifies that. Have to provide that kind of information, but if we don't think it. Represents a very substantial portion or percentage of the um. Applicant pool then. I mean, maybe they just sneak through, I don't know, you know, so that doesn't overly complicate the process, but I appreciate the point, I just.
Yeah, I I'm thinking of when we were talking about my, when I was on my kind of soapbox about Airbnbs. Um, that, you know, one of the responses back was that some people really depend upon being able to rent out their homes. Um, and that they do rent rooms and make additional funding off of that. And you know, without wading into Airbnb, I think the concern is, again, from my part. Is to make sure that we're maximizing the people who need the benefit in that, you know, we get it that some, some people may want to help their kid. Save money and not charge them rent, but that person maybe probably shouldn't get a public benefit in the form of tax relief. Um, if and, you know, and I and I know that we want to make sure that we're not waiting too heavily into the personalize of anyone. But I I need to see that we have some criteria that. At least on a uh initially could catch uh some of the, some of those things.
Yeah, for forgive the analogy, I mean, um. Uh, because please definitely forgive the analogy, because I'm not making comparison by any means, but it's sort of like. I would rather have robust constitutional protections against illegal surges in seniors and that kind of thing and have. Like a few thousand people, guilty people go free every year under the criminal system than not have those protections and have far fewer people. You know, go to prison wrongfully, so. You know, it's the same thing here. I would rather see a few people that might not strictly qualify. Slip through and get the benefit and rather than deny even a few, far fewer people that um. Actually deserve it and they don't get it because of of the scrutiny or something like that, so you see where I'm, you see where I'm going.
I do.
Mister, I I tend to concur with uh Mr. Franco's sentiments on this. Uh, while I do understand your point and no one wants to set up a program just to have it abused. Uh, I'd be surprised i- if the scenario you're proposing is is uh one that would amount to to. A huge number of residents.
Okay, uh, so, yes, um, Tom Man, and just as a note, Slackwoman Soroka sent me a message that she needed to step off um due to a family uh. Was obligation.
I was just gonna um repeat those sentiments, but also say like, we we don't know everyone's personal situations and. Um, reasons for certain situations, why it could go in the opposite direction where they have an elderly parent living with them. Um, that's receiving social security benefits that help towards cost of living. Um, so, and I think another one of our considerations during this process. Was not to add too much administrative work to the process. And which would be an added cost to the overall program. Um, for the additional staff that we would need if it became too cumbersome to process these applications.
Okay. So, you know, I I think I generally can agree to the, I agree with the overall framework that's been presented. You know, I I think that, you know, we want to make sure that as we develop this program that we. Probably need to carve out the flexibility to make additional modifications. Uh, that if, you know, right now, you know, I have, I really do believe that most people are are well-intentioned and do not. Uh, break the law intentionally, most people don't try to get over uh on on their fellow neighbors or the government. Um, but, you know, we all know that there's that certain amount of people who just frankly don't give a damn. Um, and and we want to, you know, I think my real concern is when we get to that, if we get to that point where we are starting to really exceed. Um. The amount of applicants to be able to provide fair relief. Uh, that we have some kind of control there to, you know, provide a little, a little more scrutiny. Um, but Lou, I think this has been a long, a lot of work in the process. Uh, I know that the presentation tonight does not actively capture the uh volume of time and work that's gone into all the modeling. That has been uh necessary to even arrive at this point, um, so thank you, Lou. And uh for that kind of draft and thank you to Heather and thank you to Mr. Alonso and Karen and CJ and. Everyone else who contributed to that process, uh, so if I can ask, what do we see as the next step here?
Yeah, I think I might need to get with uh. Uh, the town manager and figure, because I mean, this is uncharted territory for me personally is. Whipping up a. Uh, warrant article, I mean, I have models for it and perhaps I take the first shot at that and then. There's a back and forth and then we bring something back to the select board next week that looks a little more like a warrant article and. And it gets hacked up again and commented on and refined and. Finally brought before the select board on the fourteenth and hopefully approved for replacement on the warrant. That sound about right, uh, Madam Town Manager?
Yes, and we can work with town council in the drafting of that as well.
Okay, yep, yeah, that's a good idea, good idea, town council.
All right. Uh, any other comments on this topic? No.
I just want to reemphasize, you already did it, but I totally want to reemphasize that there was a ton of uh. You know, work in the past, behind the scenes. CJ on the modeling, you know, Karen Broku, the town manager, just, you know, really all in the end. Tom and I did, not that it was insignificant, it was. Take everything that we discussed, synthesize it and. You know, make or create what you saw here tonight, so.
All right, well, thank you again, and we look forward to those updates and I I trust that since this is a public presentation that we will hear. From the public, so anyone from the public who's had the opportunity to hear this. Uh, is it possible for us to get this posted onto the select board portion of the website? So that we, anyone from the public can look at this and then if they have any feedback. Uh, to shoot us an email or come to a follow-up meeting uh with some public comments to offer some, some feedback on this. That'd be great. Um, and we'll keep this on the agenda, um, on it, I'm sure to be captured underneath our discussion of fiscal year. Uh, excuse me, discussion of the annual town meeting warrant articles, so this is something that we can come back to at at any meeting uh going forward. Yep, thank you, Lou, thank you, Heather. So I want to be mindful of the time here. I know that as we get later into the evening, especially on Zoom, we start to all fade away. Um, and so I'm going to be mindful of how much time we have left here tonight. So on the agenda, um, we do have discussion of fiscal year budget, um, preliminary budget presentation. So I've asked the town manager to abbreviate this and for us to have this scheduled for the fourteenth. So we do all have the slides, um, Heather also made a presentation to the finance committee about this. So what I would encourage is, there there's also um the need to update the information. So some of the new data has come in from the state, um, also with some health insurance numbers. So there's additional modifications that need to be made. Um, given our agenda next week with having our state legislations here, it just makes more sense for us to. Um, kind of look at this administratively, respond to the town manager with any questions or comments. And plan for a more thorough update on the uh, on the fourteenth, does that sound fair, Madam Town Manager?
Yes, my um presentation is the same, um, that I was going to do tonight is the same as the one presented to finance committee on February sixteenth. So if you want to watch that meeting as well, it would be all the same slides. Um, and like Chairman Jeffrey said, the new information that we have that uh would need to be updated. The governor released the state aid numbers on Thursday, February twenty-third. Um, which was a small impact and I think that's something we need to seriously discuss um. As between the board and as well with with our delegation next week to advocate for additional funding. Um. But that needs to be updated, um, and um I have a preliminary estimate for the overlay, but I just. Uh, need to confirm those uh that number with my financial team. And um, that will change the recommendation for uh any funding that we'd use free cash for as well.
All right, um, briefly touching on the um, the fiscal year um warrants. So I just want to make uh everyone aware and I'm not, I'm just looking to see who else was on this email. Uh, we received an email, uh, I received an email and I know the town manager, looks like it was just went to the town manager and I. Uh, we received an email this evening at about five fifty. And it came in and uh from the related to the Worcester County Retirement. So, uh, the request is for us to vote to approve a two percent. Uh, COLA adjustment. Um, for the Worcester County Retirement Board, this needs to be done by multiple communities. So this will be scheduled at an upcoming meeting for us to discuss, I just want to make us all aware. Uh, we know that there's a financial implication and and the request we have is for it to be effective as of last July, which I would imagine that many of us will. Um, have some concerns about, um, so we are going to have that scheduled just for an upcoming meeting for us to discuss. Um. And and as a note, um, I think the advice uh that we've been given or the, what was noted in in the email to us. Was that our our retirees that are teachers do get a COLA uh increase, it's for the additional retirees. Uh, who are not um teachers, so we will again discuss this at a future date, I don't have any more information on that other than. Uh, that we received the request and certainly we need more information. Um, okay, so uh we do have some um legislative priorities. Um, to briefly review, and so I'll turn to the town manager uh to present this.
I don't have a a composed list for the board, but I do have um some highlighted projects. That uh I would um put forward. One being um items in our capital plan that um we could request funding for. Uh, so as an alternative source would be security upgrades, the ones that are. Uh, designated a plan for Turkey Hill in the primary school. Um, there are three different projects, one for a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred, uh, one for one hundred and thirty-one thousand. And one for eighty-three thousand five hundred. Also, the fire alarm at Turkey Hill, that's a two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar project that was. Next on the the list of priorities going down the prioritization schedule. Another uh project um that's recently come to light is we are. Going to need some security upgrades at our public safety building. Uh, that number is yet to be determined, but will likely exceed fifty thousand. So I think that would be a priority project to request funding for. And the cemetery commission is looking for, uh, they've requested through our delegation, but ob- obviously we have a process. Um, that the delegation looks to the board to submit a list of priorities. Um, there are projects that they would look like funding for through the state are. Monument restoration at North and South Cemeteries, the historic stone. Wall restoration at North and South Cemeteries for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And uh turf restoration at North and South Cemeteries, which is on our capital plan uh for fifty thousand. So those are earmark projects that I think we should um consider within the list of. Uh, submittals to our delegation, as far as other budget priorities, like I said, local aid. I, that should be one of our um. Main topics next week, how we can advocate for additional funding, the governor's budget. Um. Fully funds the Student Opportunity Act, but that doesn't um. Benefit Lunenburg in any way, so our overall impact, there was about forty thousand. And six hundred and fifty-nine dollars in additional revenue in local aid. On the state assessments and cherry sheet offsets, it was a reduction of about. Hundred ninety-four thousand, so an overall impact of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, just for a reference. Last year, we received approximately one million dollars more than the previous fiscal year in local aid.
All right. Heather, um, I would also recommend um um Marshall Park be added to that list. So.
Just to um, no, and I think I say this every year, we can ask for five million dollars, but our. Average earmark that we receive is between fifty and a hundred thousand. Just so the board is aware of that. Just so the board is aware of that.
Okay, um, so any comments on that? From any of the members, Mister uh Franco or Mister Dwyer? Okay, next week's meeting, we will be meeting with the state delegation. Uh, we will have uh a representative, the chairman of the chairwoman of the school committee. And the chairman of the finance committee will be joining us for the meeting with the state uh delegation. So what I, my expectations around the conversation are for us to have have this um. You know, kind of robust discussion about the different needs that we have. That following that meeting, uh, that the select board will need to identify. On the fourteenth, what our final list is that we will then send off to the uh state delegation. Um, typically, the select board provides the state delegation with the town's priorities based on input from all departments. And so that's really what the goal of next week's meeting is, is to have those discussions, kind of get that back and forth. And then to finalize this list so we can give it to them. Any comments, questions from anyone, uh, any other members? We're about to wrap up here. No, all right, we all need to come into the office uh tomorrow to sign warrants. So I'll reach out to Heather Sroka and just reminder, they'll be available starting at eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, we do have some minutes uh to approve. I can't get into the Google Drive. Can you remind me the dates on the minutes?
January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes for January thirty-first?
Uh, I move to approve the uh minutes of January uh thirty-first as presented.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, Mister Dwyer?
Hi.
Uh, Mister Franco?
Hi.
And an I for myself. Okay. Um, do we have any brief committee reports this evening?
I have none. I have none.
Okay, I have none either. All right, so the select board will be meeting on March the seventh. Uh, March the fourteenth and March the twenty-first, our next break is on the twenty-eighth. Uh, as discussed, the meeting next week will be with our state delegation. Uh, that will be the substantial portion of the meeting. Uh, we're going to be a little light um elsewhere. Where we do have other things on the agenda, but we will be a little light elsewhere uh next week. So that way we can allocate some time, that conversation should go on for about uh one hour. All right, any final public comments this evening? Uh, Heather, was there anything that we missed or that we need to hit real quick?
No, well, two things that I wanted to bring up during um interviews, appointments for, reappointments and resignations was. Um, Marjorie. Um, Bojio. Uh, submitted her that she's retiring and her effective retirement date is going to be June second. So obviously, um, one of the boards know that she's been a longstanding um valued employee. And um with the planning board recently uh for for many years, so um. That will be sad to see her go when she does, um. And Jim Ritchie, the captain at the fire department. He retired, um, his last day is, or official retirement date is March first, his last shift was on February twenty-fourth. Fourth, so we wish him as well as in his retirement.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, let's make sure we get those letters so I can sign them and uh send them off to them to really thank them for their years of service and. When you scuttle the party with Marjorie, you know I want to be there. All right. Okay, do we have any public comments this evening from the town manager? All right, any from the uh, from the board?
I'm all commented out for the evening.
Yep.
I'm done.
All right, any public comments from the public? And we'll pause for a moment. Any public comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, um, this is a roll call vote, uh, Mister Franco.
Hi.
Uh, Mister Dwyer.
Hi.
And I for myself. Uh, thank you all for joining us this evening. Uh, we look forward to seeing you next week back in person at town hall at seven P M. And again, please tune in. As we'll be meeting with our uh state delegation and welcoming uh uh Representative Margaret Scarsdale officially to the team. So have a wonderful evening, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.